Welcome to the April 14, 2010 hearing of the County of Santa Barbara Planning Commission. Would you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under the law, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rodriguez, would you please provide the TV coverage announcement and followed by roll call?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Pocong, Sanaynese Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of the Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And now for the roll call. Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Black?
And good morning, Ms. Black, and if you'd give us the Agenda Status Report.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This morning we have a fairly full agenda. We have five items and we are ready to move forward on all five.
And the projection report?
Yes. For the projection report, we will not be meeting next Wednesday, April 21st. We've already canceled that hearing. So our next meeting of the County Planning Commission will be on May 5th. That hearing will be in Santa Barbara and we have about five and a half hours on that day already. On May 12th, we'll be meeting again in Santa Maria and we have about three and a half hours that day. We are proposing to cancel May 19th. We'll obviously do that a little bit later in the month or in the early May month, but it doesn't look as if we'll need that hearing date. June 2nd will again be in Santa Barbara and we have an hour and a half on that date. We also plan to bring the Coastal Commission's suggested modifications on the Land Use Development Code to the Planning Commission on that date, so I think that will take some time as well to go through. It doesn't show yet on your projection report, but that's what we're planning. And I could talk a little bit more about that during the Director's Report. We talked briefly last week about the hearing scheduled for June 9th, and I did indicate that that was Budget Week. So we, the Board meets on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, and it's pretty difficult for the Planning Commission to meet at the same time as the Board on Budget because it just creates too many conflicts, including TV conflicts. So we're suggesting that we meet on either Tuesday or Thursday. And I did have an opportunity to talk to two Commissioners, and their suggestion was to meet on June 8th, which is Tuesday, and to start at 11 o'clock to avoid a personal conflict on the Commission. So if that seems to meet with the approval of the Planning Commission, we'll see if we can make that work.
Okay, great, okay. That's good. And we'll meet in Santa Barbara?
Well, that's actually a Santa Maria hearing date. So we'll have to make sure the room's available, but I think it should be available because it would normally be reserved for the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, but they won't be using it. June 16th, you know, this is quite far out to even be planning, but we are trying to, where we can, cancel the third hearing of the month. And so we will be looking to potentially cancel June 16th as well.
Okay.
And that's, I think that's about as far as we need to go at this point.
Okay. Thank you. And now is the time for public comment, and this is a period set aside to allow public testimony on items not on today's agenda. And no, we have no slips for public comments, so I'll close the public comment period and move to Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Anyone got any reports? No? All right. Then Ms. Black, to you for Director's Report and Board of Supervisors Hearing Summary.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Dr. Russell is out for the remainder of the week at a conference, so I'll just do a very brief Director's Report. There really wasn't anything on the agenda yesterday directly related to the work of the Planning Commission. We did have the AB 811 items on, and the Board did approve those items, but they've not yet approved the funding for them. So I think there's still a decision to be made during the Budget Hearings on that, and I don't know a whole lot about it, so hopefully the Commission doesn't have a lot of questions. With regard to the item that we talked about the week, last week, the Land Use Development Code, as I indicated, we will be discussing that at the Commission. The Board is very interested in getting input from the County Planning Commission, the Montecito Planning Commission will also be going to the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And so we thought June 2nd would be a good date for your Commission to spend some time on that. We will be trying to frame up the issues that are embedded in a quite lengthy staff report, but I've been through now the whole Coastal Commission staff report, and I think I have a bit better understanding of what the more significant issues are, and Mr. Lengel certainly does as well. So we'll try to present that in a way that the Commission can both absorb it and provide comments to the Board of Supervisors and recommendations. We also anticipate going to the Montecito Planning Commission, and I think we will plan to go to them the week before at their May hearing. And then we will probably go to the Ag Advisory Committee the same day as we go to the Commission, so we'll likely request that the Commission take this item up first so that Noel and Mr. Lengel and Mr. Russell can go to the Ag Advisory Committee in the afternoon. Then we'll be back to the Board on July 6th, and we expect that the Coastal Commission will hear this in August. So I think it'll give us enough time if we have some questions or, you know, need to do some additional work that we can get through that particular item.
A lot of work ahead on that.
I think there's definitely some work ahead. And that's all I had to report on unless the Commission had questions.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. All right. Then we'll move right into our standard agenda. So Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd read that into the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Camille Asori, Galita Sanitary District, to consider the following. A-09-RVP-1, application filed on January 29, 2009. B-09-CDP-99, application filed on December 7, 2009, and to adopt the mitigation measures in the mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 20080114, prepared by the Galita Sanitary District pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of CEQA.
And before staff presentation, any ex parte and site visit disclosures by any Commissioners? None? Okay. Well, then I do have one. I had a really wonderful tour provided by Mr. Salt and Ms. Werner on Monday. An hour, he walked around the entire plant, and it was really very informational and very helpful. And having read all the material, I went back and it came forth with much greater clarity. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to let you know. And with that, then we'll begin staff presentation. Dr. Walter.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Mark Walter, Planning Development. Before I begin, I'd like you to know that in Santa Barbara, I believe, are available by remote testimony, the consulting archaeologist David Stone for Galita Sanitary District, I believe Ann Almy from PND is also there, and I think Brett Stewart from the Transportation Division is also there.
And we can see Mr. Stewart on our screen.
Okay. So if you have any questions for any of them, they should be down there.
Thank you.
So yes, this is a proposed major plant upgrade to the existing Galita Sanitary District Plant, the main plant which many of you may know is situated out in Galita near the Galita Beach Park, actually. And just geographically to orient everybody, on this slide you can see the Santa Barbara Airport over here just to the west of the plant. This is the plant in its entirety over in this area. It's bordered by William Offutt Place just to the west, which runs in a north-south direction. You see San Pedro Creek, which actually in this area is channelized, and that forms the eastern boundary of the Sanitary District property. Then Highway 217 runs along the south and southeast here, and Galita Beach Park is about 1,000 feet or more to the south of the district's plant, right there. And just keeping with the aerial photos for a bit, this is a closer view of the existing plant as it is currently configured. And what I have up here are numbers that refer to proposed portions of the site where new work would be conducted and new structures would be constructed. Up here, this is Area 1, which is in the north. This currently is basically an undeveloped area in this region. Number, work Area 2, or site, you know, project Area 2, is over in here. There's some existing development. There's a biofilter here. Another one is proposed for this location here. And there's other vaults and associated infrastructure that would be developed in Area 2 as well. Area 3 is way down near the southern boundary of the district plant. These are some existing drying beds here. There would be proposal, part of the proposal, I should say, is to take out of service some of those beds and construct some new facilities in that area. And then Area 4 encompasses basically this existing stabilization basin, which would be converted to a different use, and some other construction that would occur in this area. And throughout the presentation, I will be referencing these proposed areas of the plant with respect to the development. Now, again, most of this is very industrial in nature. That is being, in fact, all of it is, that's being proposed. And just to show you an idea of what would be developed, here again in the northern part of the site is Area 1. This is difficult to see, but this is a proposed new building here, a blower building here. There's some new tanks proposed here. These are not roofed and enclosed structures. These are above ground and below ground, both. There's some new sedimentation tanks here as well. That's in Area 1, which was that undeveloped area that you saw on the aerial photo. Area 2, down here, there's a new biofilter next to the existing one. Some various vaults and pumping structures would be associated with that. And down here in Area 2, there's some additional development proposed in terms of some new buildings. Basically, there is a shower and locker room building and some other associated infrastructure. In both of these areas, there's some new pipeline proposed as well, which runs underground mostly. Down in Area 3, like I mentioned before, there's some existing development in terms of the drying beds and other associated structures or infrastructure. Some of that would be decommissioned, and a new solids material handling building would be constructed over in this eastern portion of the site, along with some holding tanks and other facilities as well, and some new pipe. Then finally, in Area 4, this basin, like I said, would be graded and converted to a new use. Basically, the embankment would simply be regraded, and the bottom would be lowered a small amount, and a new pumping station would be built along, adjacent to it. So as you can see, most of what's being proposed is, with the exception of the shower locker room building, which is a different type of facility, almost everything else that you see here is actually an industrial structure. It isn't something that people would be in eight hours a day. It's just treatment facility structures themselves. So with respect to the actual upgrade project, what this would do would convert the treatment level of all the liquid waste that comes into the plant from the current level, which is a blend of primary and secondary treatment, to full secondary treatment for all incoming liquid waste. So obviously, higher level of treatment, very beneficial. What that would require is multiple new treatment facilities. Overall, there's about 48,000 square feet of new development that's proposed. There's a substantial amount of grading. Most of that has to do with excavation to install the below-grade foundations and portions of the below-grade tanks and other structures. And like I mentioned before, there's numerous various types of structures, above and below ground, tanks, vaults, various roofed and enclosed structures as well. One thing I think that's important to point out right now is that there is no change in the permitted capacity of the plant. This will not result in any change in the permitted capacity. That capacity is outlined in both the 1980, I believe '85, and a 1990 development plan for the plant, and there is no change in this capacity at all. Now, and you may have noticed in reading through the staff report, there are a number of issues that arose because of the nature of the project, and really more by virtue of its location than anything else. Two of these issues, which I want to touch on very briefly, are air quality and growth inducement, because although they were discussed, they essentially are non-issues in that the plant will not, and this project will not result in any change to these at all, any impacts. So with respect to air quality, very quickly, gas byproduct is a natural byproduct of the sewage treatment process. The burning of it does release some compounds which could entail a health risk. The current APCD permit, which is quite old, it's 15 to 20 years old, has some levels that were permitted, operation levels, in terms of burning of this gas. Those are outdated. And it's an interesting concept that the permit that was given did not actually address the correct level, because at the time it was given, my understanding is they didn't look at these sorts of issues. So APCD, when looking at this project, contacted us and discussed the fact that if the plant were to operate at the level allowed by that outdated permit, then the byproduct from the burning of the gas could exceed the health risk threshold of 10 in a million. However, the plant currently does not operate anywhere near that level, nor with these new developments would they operate anywhere near that level. However, APCD needs to give an authority to construct and a permit to operate for this new reconfigured plant, in that the new APCD permit will have this lower level, which is the appropriate one, which cannot be exceeded, and that will restrict it to below the threshold of 10 in a million, to make sure that there couldn't be any increase that would result in a health risk. It's, I think, really more an unfortunate outcome of having an outdated operational permit from APCD than anything else. There's actually no impact from this project that would result in a health risk. Same thing with growth inducement. It is a topic that comes up with projects like this, water districts, sanitary districts, when a major upgrade is done to a plant. However, again, there is no change in the permitted capacity. The permitted capacity is 9 million gallons a day. It will remain 9 million gallons a day. There is no change either in the influx or the discharge. And one thing that should be noted is, the plant is regulated by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they are required to give the Regional Board records with respect to their discharge, and it is kept by the Regional Board. They keep an eye on this. So that permitted capacity, which is in both our permits as well as the Regional Board permit, does restrict them to 9 million gallons a day. That will not change as a result of this proposal. So those are two of the issues that came up, but really, the current proposal will have no impact on either of those issues. Now, moving on to cultural resources, and let me say this at the outset, normally we do not talk about the location of cultural resources. In this instance, to be able to discuss the potential impacts of this project and the adequacy of the conditions that have been applied, we need to acknowledge upfront that the plant sits on top of a portion of one of the most important Chumash villages in the entire central South Coast area. And that's the village of Hilo. In historic times, that landform was named the Skeleton Island, and the district occupies a portion of that site. Now, Hilo itself has been the subject of multiple excavations, multiple published reports in the public domain. You can read about it. It is not restricted material. There have been significant and widespread resources recovered by various surveys, various excavations over the years. There are books, many, many books that describe the various resources that exist, that existed previously, that have been recovered. However, one thing I think that needs to be kept in mind when looking at the cultural resource issue, is that over time, the original island landform has been truncated by various developments. In fact, the western portion of it was removed during the building of the airfield for the Marine Corps. Other Caltrans projects, other projects for the airport, et cetera, have resulted in loss of parts of the original landform. The reason that becomes important is because there are those four work areas that I mentioned before. Some of those areas may be in portions of the landform that have either been removed or adjacent to those areas that have been removed. Now, in specific, the proposal that we have today lists Area 3 as a site where there would be excavation and construction. However, and I'll show you a visual of this in a second, substantial grading occurred back in the early 60s that did remove all of the original island landform at the south boundary of the district plant. That's Area, and that is the area which is now termed Area 3. It was later filled in with fill from other sources, and there are district plant facilities on it. However, there's nothing that remains there of the original landform. So when we reviewed this from the materials that we were provided, we did determine that Area 3 was definitely outside of the original landform, and that the work proposed in that area would have no impact to cultural resources. And here's just a visual of that same thing. This is the district plant as it is configured today, and this dashed line here represents the Cut Bank, where back in the early 60s, there was removal of that part of the landform. So, and again, this is Area 3 down here to the south of the Cut Bank line. You can see that. And in this visual, what this is, Area 3 is again down here, and this blue line that I've put in represents where the Cut Bank was. So all of this portion down here in Area 3 rests on artificial fill that was imported later, and no portion of the original island landform remains there. So I think it's safe to say that in Area 3, there's no potential at all for impacts to cultural resources. And therefore, there is no requirement for monitoring, there's no requirement for any subsurface exploration in that portion of the site. And Areas 1 and 4, which again are at the northern, very northern portion of the site and at the extreme southeastern portion, there, the proposed work areas are on the edges of the original landform. Whether they are on or off the landform is very difficult to identify with certainty. Boundaries of sites are uncertain. They're approximate. You can have erosional deposition of resources from higher on the landform down to the edges of water course such as the Jason Slough. And in historic times, actually, I should say prehistoric times, the water levels were much lower than they are today. And when you take all those factors into account, there is the potential in Areas 1 and 4 for cultural resources to exist. There's disturbed fill there from uncertain origin as well, potentially from other parts of the site. So there is a potential there that resources would be disturbed during excavation. Now, for those areas, what we have done is applied monitoring only, and that would be spot monitoring on a periodic basis, with the ability to increase or decrease the spot monitoring as required depending upon what's found. If nothing is found with continued monitoring, the applicant's consulting archaeologist will consult with our staff archaeologist, Joyce Gerber, and determine whether continued monitoring is warranted, whether, if something is found, of course, there is suspension redirection of work until we determine its significance. So that's Areas 1 and 4. Area 2, which again was in the middle of the site, that is the area where we feel that there is a potential for significant resources. Now, a Phase 1, an extended Phase 1, no, a Phase 1 study was done previously by David Stone. It was quite a good Phase 1. It utilized geo-probes to look at the area where the new biofilter would be in Area 2. Because of the type of resources that have been found elsewhere on this site, house floors, isolated features like that, those geo-probes may not be adequate to determine whether within the footprint of the development proposed in Area 2, you have features like that. They're much better at determining scattered, diffuse, things like shell middens, et cetera. So based on the evidence that we had initially, we could not make the determination that within the footprint of what is proposed for Area 2, that that is culturally sterile. So there is a condition, Condition 32, which has been applied to the project, and that is to implement a work program which will entail additional subsurface exploration within the footprint of what is proposed in Area 2 only. This is not for Areas 1, 3 or 4. And just a visual of that to show you here, this is from the actual work plan itself that is being proposed. You can see here the outline for the proposed biofilter, the associated vaults and pumping structures, the associated pipelines, et cetera, in this visual. The existing biofilter, by the way, is over here just to the east. These are the proposed trenches that would be excavated and inspected as part of the work program. Obviously, if any resources are found, they will be evaluated for significance. If they are found to be significant, this would then move into a Phase 3 data recovery type of program. So with the application of that condition with this work program, we feel that the resources within this area are adequately, the impacts, I should say, are adequately addressed. So that's the cultural resources. And then the other issue that came up, and again, by virtue of its location, are the geological hazards at the site. The site does sit adjacent to an earthquake fault, the Moore Ranch Fault. There are others in the vicinity as well. The area is one of potential liquefaction according to the mitigated negative declaration, and there is some high groundwater there. It's subject to ground shaking, obviously, with the earthquake faults nearby, and there's some moderately expansive soils present at the site. Now, the geologic hazard policies of the county are both somewhat broad brush as well as very specific. And in talking about this, if we look at Policy 3-10, there is an absolute requirement for a setback of a minimum of 50 feet, and that's from potentially active, historically active, and active faults. That's- That's just, that is one of the few where we see that it is specified, this is the setback. The other two policies that are pertinent call for a design and location to be addressed such that the hazards are minimized. And this is just a visual to show you how complicated the site is and how constrained it is as well. If you look, especially, every one up here, these are some hypothetical faults that may or may not exist, and we believe that, based on the evidence that has been presented, likely there is no fault in this area. However, down here, in this, this is the southern edge of the site, and there's been numerous studies over time that show that their Moore Ranch Fault, or trace offsets of the Moore Ranch Fault, do intrude through this, along this southern boundary. And so, various projects over the years out of the site have incorporated setbacks. For example, this over here for, I believe this was part of the reclaimed water expansion back in the 19, early 90s or 80s. These are the sorts of things that were investigated, both by the applicant's consulting geologists, as well as peer-reviewed by the county's peer-review geologists. Now, for the earthquake faults, and I believe, I wanted to just address this briefly because it, the discussion for consistency in the staff report is somewhat different than we normally see. The policy calls for a strict 50-foot setback. There are active, potentially and historically active faults in the area. Now, the proof for that setback, and for the absence or presence of faults, the absolute proof requires extensive trenching. This is a very highly constrained site. There's a wetland to the north of Area 1. To the south of Area 3, where the Moore Ranch Fault is, is gas company property. So the site is very constrained in terms, the ability of the applicant to simply conduct adequate trenching. The consulting geologist for the applicant, for the district, did speak with us about the infesibility of actually extending the trenches that were excavated. And we agreed that, yes, that would be extremely difficult. It was infeasible. The further discussions were on whether the 50-foot setback was an appropriate standard for this type of a project. Normally, you see this with residential projects where there's great scrutiny of this. This, as I said before, is very industrial in nature. This proposal for the upgrade really contains nothing in terms of structures where people would be sitting all day. Almost all of these are structures where people would be, for a minimum amount of time, checking on things. So the request came for an application of a different standard based on the non-habitable status, and this is a different standard with respect to the policy consistency that we were doing. The standard that we discussed was that there would be a reasonable expectation that the hazard, so the risk, from ground rupture is negligible. Not that there's an absolute that we can prove that it's setback 50 foot from, 50 feet from any fault, but that the hazard is negligible. The documents that we asked for were provided, we sent them for peer review, and the county peer reviewers concurred that this was a reasonable request, given the type of project it is, with certain conditions. And I believe that, and this would be a good time to bring this up, that you have already received this memorandum, which I'd like, if you haven't, I'd like to enter into the record anyway. It's dated April 10th, from Dave Ward. And in this are two additional conditions, by the way, that address this subject, as well as the county's peer review, the final peer review letter on various geologic topics. So our county peer reviewers concurred that, with respect to the 50-foot setback and how we look at seismic hazards, that it was a reasonable request to look at this from a position of the hazard from ground rupture. And based on that, we can find consistency with pertinent policies, CLUP 10, and the deleted community plan GV6, based on this. The other part of the geologic hazards issues are more geotechnical, and has to do with the design and location of the buildings that are being proposed. And again, given the type of structures that we're talking about, given the use of them, the request was to accept as adequate the design and location of what was being proposed based on the non-habitable status, again, and the type of project that it was. And you can see also in this peer review letter that our county peer reviewers concurred, again, that this was a reasonable request with certain conditions applied, and therefore we can find consistency with the coastal land use plan Policy 3-14, and again, the deleted community plan Policy GV6, based on this request. Now, to incorporate the conclusions and recommendations of our geologic peer reviewers that agreed that these were reasonable requests, we did have to add two new conditions, which are not in your staff report. However, they are in the memorandum. Those are Conditions 51 and 52, which are listed in your version of the memorandum. And in terms of just numbering, to keep everything consistent, in the CDP, by the way, Condition 51 would be Condition 47. Condition 51 simply says that the project will be in strict conformance with all the comments in the peer review letter. That's, I think, fairly straightforward, very typical. The other condition, which is Condition 52, we have discussed a number of times with the sanitary district, and we have come to this version of it, which is the final version and is acceptable to all, and that's Condition 52 on your memorandum, and will be Condition 48 in the coastal development permit. And what this calls for is that the seismic design parameters, this is a geotechnical issue, for all structures subject to building permits, and we don't know which those are, if any, that, would be built in, the parameters would be designed in accordance with certain features of the California Building Code. And we needed to incorporate this condition, this new condition, in order to account for the peer review comments. So there are those two new conditions. In addition, there's some revisions, some of which were noted by the sanitary district to just make sure that everything was understood. And these are not in the memorandum, these are revisions that came up at the last minute, and I apologize for that. But in Condition 10, which is mitigation monitoring condition, there's simply a change in date. However, in Condition 18, that is a condition that addresses traffic and transportation along William Fowler, ah, William Fowler Place, which, William Offit Place, I should say, which goes along the west side of the district property. And it called for no queuing parking or idling. So it's a narrow road, it's heavily used. However, as the applicant pointed out, equipment will need to access and leave the site on occasions during the three-year phased construction of this project. So we did add what is underlined here, that idling of equipment delivery vehicles would be permitted for a short period of time, and our compliance officer will work with the district to make sure that adequate time actually is given, so that there is no, the backup on the roadway is minimized, and yet, the construction isn't slowed down. Again, there was a request that we make sure that Conditions 25 and 22 are consistent with each other, and so we simply referenced Condition 22 in Condition 25, as the applicant had noted. And so, what you see on the screen is, as prescribed in Condition 22, would be new language added at a certain point in Condition 25. And then, Condition 34, in most of the conditions having to do with cultural resources, there is a phrase that was added, which is the same as this that is underlined here on the screen, which says that where this condition conflicts with the original mitigation measure in the mitigated negative declaration, that this condition shall take precedence. That was not added to Condition 34 by mistake, and so we're adding it here. And then, a couple of, those are revisions that we discussed with the applicant and that they had noted. Here are, unfortunately, again, some revisions that have to do with the staff report itself and the CDP. In the staff report, in the motion, we do need to add "and attachment F," because that is the CDP, is attachment F. In the SEQA findings, in Section 1.1.4, we need to change Section 15091 to 15074. And then, in Attachment F, which is the CDP, Condition 49 references the coastal, the revised development plan that should reference the coastal development permit. So we would strike through revised development plan and add coastal development permit. It will need to be renumbered as well, which is because of this last revision here. In the CDP, as it stands, the development plan conditions are cited, they are referenced. Those should be deleted, and then the remaining conditions would simply be renumbered. That's just a numbering issue, after we delete those specific conditions. And then, one last topic that came up at the last minute was a question of development impact mitigation fees, DIMFs, and in specific, the question for transportation. And Brett Stewart can also address this, if you'd like, if you have questions. The development impact mitigation fees for transportation were applied based on the fact that there would be two new employees, so two new peak hour trips for the district. That was multiplied by the existing fee per peak hour trip to get the transportation impact mitigation fee. And the question came as to whether or not that could either be waived completely or reduced. So the transportation department did review it, they determined it was eligible for reduction. The reduction is based on a formula that was adopted by the board. And there is a reduced transportation DIMF that is different, slightly different than what is in the table in Section 6.6 in the staff report. So that would be reduced by approximately $6,000-plus, and that would be the new DIMF that would be applied for transportation. So that would be a change, although it's not a change in the conditions, per se. So, having said all that, the recommendation, finally, is to make the required finding, oh, okay, is to make the required findings for approval of the project specified in Attachment A, including the SEQA findings, accept the mitigated negative declaration, which was prepared and adopted by the Galleta Sanitary District, and that's included as Attachment C, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program, and approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment B and Attachment F. And I believe that is it, except I would like to allow counsel to bring up the SEQA finding sections and some changes to that.
Ms. Van Muller.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, it's just a slight language change to Finding 1.1.1, which is the first SEQA finding, and it should read that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the information contained in the negative declaration and the environmental effects of the project as shown in the negative declaration, and then continue on with what's there, together with the comments received and considered during the public review process. And that change is just to be consistent with the SEQA guideline language.
Great, thank you, Dr. Walter. That was an excellent presentation, and I failed to acknowledge Ms. Gerber, who is the county's archaeologist, and I had asked that she be here today because of the archaeological significance of this site, and if there were any questions that Dr. Walter couldn't answer, I felt it would be important for her to be here. So, with that, I open it to planning commissioners for any of their questions of staff, before I turn it over to the applicant. Any questions, my commissioners? No? Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
Madam Chair, I am recently sensitized to the need for, for pre-project, at least, exploration of, of the cultural resources, and I realize we're being presented with a lot of research that's been done here, and the project then is, is calling for one particular area to, to have further characterization before, before any construction would begin. And so, it appears the planning commission's in the position of looking forward, if you will, to what is a flexible situation, since we don't know what the exploration will produce. And I just, I'd appreciate if Ms. Gerber could kind of go over all of the work staff has done to come to this conclusion why only this site, that is Area Number 3, and not the others, were selected, and, and whether, as an archaeologist, she's comfortable the trenching proposal for Area 3 is adequate for our approval.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, again, I'm Joyce Gerber, the staff archaeologist, and we have actually conducted extensive work with the applicant and their archaeologist, David Stone. We've independently reviewed the materials he presented and actually obtained additional materials from UCSB and the sources that have excavated at this site before. The, as David, or excuse me, as Mark explained, Area 3, we're confident is completely off the Meskellaton Island landform. This area was, we have very good records that all of the original soils that would have comprised the landform have been completely removed, so that the possibility of cultural materials originating in Hilo being there is zero, and we're confident about that. Areas 1 and 4 are more or less off the original landform. However, some of the work is occurring close enough to the edge of that landform that it is possible that materials from the island, which is, was actually an island in the Galleta Slough at the time of prehistoric occupation, some of those materials may have eroded off, and there also may have been some activity in those areas, just off the landform, based on fluctuating water levels, as Mark mentioned. You know, we're not sure what people living on that landform would have been doing. They were certainly collecting shellfish around the margins, they were utilizing the Galleta Slough for their food, and they probably did have activities that were conducted around the margins of the island, depending on the water level. So for that reason, we are requesting that any activity there be monitored, at first more frequently by an archaeologist, and then, as we discover whether or not there are indeed materials there, we can adjust the frequency and intensity of monitoring as a result. Area 2 is a little different, because it was at the east portion of that area, where, back in the 80s, very intense evidence of the village occupation of this site, which may have contained up to 800 people possibly at the time of contact. As Mark said, one of the largest prehistoric villages on the central coast. There were features such as house floors and other relatively intact indications of the prehistoric occupants there. The work that David Stone did in the western portion of Area 2, where the Biofilter 2 and its pertinent facilities would be constructed, was very thorough. He did excavate a number of augers, they were two inches, I believe David can correct me if I'm misremembering this, but about two inches in diameter, and he excavated dozens of them throughout the area. And this is a really good way of telling whether or not there are diffuse remains. For instance, you would find shellfish, or you would find bone, or you would find chipstone in those areas. And there was some material, and in some areas, the material was absent. So there's a real variability within this region of the material, that sort of material present subsurface. The other thing these geoprobes did was identify very clearly where the imported soil had occurred. So we know exactly at what elevation below the surface the native soil is present, and that's- And that's the material that would contain cultural materials if there was any there. So we know exactly how much we need to strip off because of his testing to get to the parts that could contain archaeological materials. Because, as Mark said, of the nature of the things found in this site, specifically features like house floors, which look like, if you look at them in profile, they look like big broad smileys. You know, they're very, they're like basins. So, and their thickness does tend to vary. So sometimes it's difficult to find a feature like that if you're just looking at a two-inch core. You have to really look carefully at the constituents of that core. Much easier to see a feature like that if you expose a broad area and very carefully excavate a backhoe trenches are the ideal way to accomplish that. Because you get a long exposure and you can see, especially if you have a geomorphologist, as they're planning to do, that comes in and analyzes the soils, you can see exactly how they change when that clay lens that would indicate a house floor would occur. And then if you find something like that, you'd be able to peel back that exposure and study it and perform mitigation of impact excavations if you had to. We had several meetings with David Stone and with the applicant. And I'm very confident that this work program would serve to identify and mitigate any adverse impacts to cultural resources from the site.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. That's that's very helpful. What role, if any, have Native Americans had in this process to date?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I know that the applicant's archaeologist has contacted the Native Americans. They did a record search of the Native American Heritage Commission. They were given a list of most likely descendants. And I know they did make those contacts. But I'd actually like to turn it over to the applicant's archaeologist to answer that question.
Is Mr. Stone available in Santa Barbara? Or Ms. Almy?
Yes, hi. Mr. Stone is not here.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cooney, the Sanitary District staff can address that. But very briefly, I would mention that the Native Americans, I believe, two individuals did attend a meeting with the district to go over the proposed at that time phase one that Mr. Stone was proposing. And they reviewed both the proposal and they walked the site. And they were in concurrence with what was done.
Okay. Ms. Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question about the definition of non-habitable space in the seismic design parameters slide. I'm, what I'd like to ask staff is, you know, we have how many employees at the sanitation treatment plant? And how would this restrict access to other people? I know no one is living there per se. People are working there. I'd just like to get a better definition of what this non-habitable space means.
This slide up. Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, I believe where you read, actually, this is the wrong slide. I'm sorry. The seismic design parameters, let me just go to that. Yes. All right. The, and again, this is a little different than normal in that this was, this came about, actually, this, this, what I put it, this argument as to how we would look at the policies and find consistency with them came about because of the inability to actually conduct the feasibility, infeasibility, I should say, to conduct adequate trenching. It simply wasn't feasible for the site. So the consulting geologist looked at the type of project it was and said, well, what are we really building here? Are we building something where people are going to be working eight hours a day in any specific structure? And that really is what we were using as the term habitable. There is no definition, there is a definition for habitable in the, in County Code. I'm not saying there isn't. But what we were looking at was something different was what is the use of this plant and the structures that are being proposed? Are people going to be sitting at their desk for the entire day in one of the proposed structures? If so, we would consider that habitable. And as such, that's a little different than something where somebody's only going to be there 10 minutes checking on a filter or even 30 minutes or an hour checking to see if the process is going as it should. And that gets back to the issue of risk. And what we are looking at here and what we were moving away from were the strict standards and saying, we are going to look at this from a risk-based perspective. So what is the risk or the hazard associated with the employees, with the, to the employees and to the public from the new structures that are proposed? With respect to the employees, because again, these are not structures where somebody would be occupying them for the entire day, our consulting geologists concurred that the hazard to the, to the employees and the public was negligible. Because they would not be there occupying these new structures for the entire day. It would only be for a portion of the day. With respect to the public, the public and the district staff can answer this much better than I. The public, although there is public access in terms of meetings, talking to district staff, et cetera, their open house days, the public is, this is not a completely public spot where people just have free access and can go and sit on these structures at will. Nor would they want to, for most of them. So again, our peer review geologists concurred that the risk to the public is well from allowing the design parameters to proceed as they already had been proposed, as well as not trenching, doing additional trenching to absolutely prove a 50-foot setback from any fault, that because of those sorts of mitigating factors, the lack of public access, the type of structures, the fact that they weren't going to be occupied for the entire day, that the hazard was negligible.
I just have a follow-on question to Commissioner Brooks's question. Many of these structures, can employees even gain access into interiors? I, I don't, I mean, some of the big, just from what I saw in my walk around, not possible.
Madam Chair, again, the, I think the district staff would be the best to ask on that. However, my understanding is, again, a number of these things are simply tanks. And so they would be on top checking on things, not in the interior or down in the foundation area. There are some where they would have to go in and check equipment from time to time. But a large number of the structures that are proposed are for holding pipe and fluid and solids, not for actual entry of the employees.
Right. So it would be probably not even on a daily basis. It would be on a periodic basis where they'd go and just check for leaks and other.
Madam Chair, I believe that's correct.
Now, I have two archaeological related questions. And one, if you could put the slide on the conceptual backhoe trench locations, please. As Ms. Gerber explained about the house floors, how was this plan devised so that the trenching was this way rather than more random? I mean, is there something that leads you to believe that this would provide the most evidence of any resources that are there?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this plan was actually devised by the applicant's archaeologist, Mr. Stone. And it is a little different, I believe, than the original plan where the trenches were a bit shorter and not so, they were a little farther apart. We didn't specify where the trenches needed to go, but we did ask for them to be a little longer and a little closer together to ensure that there was good coverage. I don't think that there was any real pattern to these other than wanting to provide complete coverage. And also, if you can see, they're perpendicular to the topographic contours, which would actually allow a little easier trenching and a little easier recordation.
But would that provide the greatest amount of information? Presumably, you have looked at documentation of what, of what could potentially be there, so that you'd have some idea based upon that where the trenches should go. So that, this plan meets sort of with that information that's available?
Madam Chair, that is correct. This plan was developed, in my understanding, with reference to the results of the original augers that were the results of the auger testing.
Great. And then I just have one last question on condition 37. And it's about the issue of soil export. And I was just wondering, as material is pulled out of these areas, I appreciate and understand that there will be somebody who looks at it to see if there's any resources. But it is possible, is it not, that the quantity of material is such that they wouldn't be able to look at all of it? I mean, it might be, as they pull it out, you're not going to be able to see into it. And as it's dumped in a truck, it may, you may not again, see all of it. And that as it's deposited on some external source, you may have that opportunity to see with, in a different view, whether or not there's any, if there's any resources. So it would seem like that it might be important to have somebody at the export site as well to view, to see if there's any resources. Is that not, that's not into the condition. I'm just wondering, was that even necessary? Because as you excavate, you're going to get to see everything that you need to see.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that is correct. It certainly is a possibility to have the archaeologists that would be there anyway to go take a look at the deposit site, which in a condition, part of the condition that was actually written by the applicant's archaeologists was that those sites would be documented, so we know where those materials will go. I think that would certainly be even more important for the materials that come out below the overburden, rather than the overburden. And just to note that the materials that come out below the overburden, those controlled scrapes will be, not only will the trenches be examined, but my understanding is that some of the soils on a regular basis from those controlled scrapes will be screened. So that if there are small things coming out that might be diagnostic, such as shell beads, which are very sensitive time indicators, or projectile points, which may be as well, those would be caught in that process. But I think that it would be a normal thing and could certainly be specified for the archaeologists that were doing the work during that trenching to also go and just take a walk over those, those backdirt piles. This certainly would not be a problem.
So is that something that then we should write into, to just add to amplify in that condition?
I think that it could certainly be formalized in that way. Most archaeologists would be doing that anyway, but it wouldn't hurt to formalize it.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions by commissioners? No? All right, then we move on to the applicant and Mr. Ozuri. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Camille Ozuri. I'm the general manager of the Galita Sanitary District. I guess you can tell that we've really picked a very good site for our treatment plant. There isn't anything that I can think of that we're not running into, but we are there and we cannot change it at this point. So we have to work with what we have. I would like to introduce a couple of people that we are, that have come up with me today to this hearing. Mr. Stephen Majeski, he is a member of our board. He is an elected official. And he wanted to be here because he wanted to demonstrate the significance of this project to the district. This is a very, very important project for us. And we don't often really do projects of that nature. It's very important for the community. I do have Mr. Jeff Salt over there. He is the operations manager. And he is the guy that pushes the buttons, turns the valves and runs the pumps. And he is the guy that really needs to make sure that the system operates as it should be in order to produce the final purified water quality according to the permit that we have from EPA and the regional board. And then I have Kathleen Werner. She wears actually two hats. She is the technical services supervisor and the lab director. She makes sure that our quality of the final product is within the regulatory requirements. And then in her role as the technical services supervisor, she's been very intimately involved with the permitting process on this project. I do want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the project to you. I want to thank your staff for the very thorough and diligent work that they've done. I think that if Mark wants to have another job when he retires, we'd like to hire him as a historian. He does have a very good feel for the project and he covered it very thoroughly. I'd like to mention a couple of issues, if I may, and I don't know how much time I have, Madam Chair.
You have what time you need.
Thank you. I, I'd like to just indicate that we are here today on behalf of the community in Galita. We serve about 80,000 to 85,000 people. Our treatment facility serves the entire Galita Valley. So we're here to make sure that the community in Galita is being taken care of with respect to the wastewater needs that our district provides. We play a very important role in the sense that wastewater treatment that we provide, as well as the recycling, has become a very integral part of the community need. And I would like to invite you all to come and visit us one day. We have an annual open house. I'm sure Ms. Brown, as she indicated in her opening remark, it's a, it's a very interesting visit to make to our facility. You would think it's a park. We'd like to maintain a very good image that, that we have as a wastewater provider. But then we want to make sure that the image is the right image there. So inconsistent with that approach, we need to enhance our treatment systems. We need to upgrade the level of treatment as a result of changes in regulations and desires of the regulatory environment. So we are essentially upgrading the treatment process. We're not, as Mark indicated, we're not changing any of the capacity that we already have. So the facilities that you see in Mark's presentation are focused on mostly treatment. There are a bunch of tanks that have liquids in them. Some of them you really don't want to take a second look at, but they are just tanks that simply provide aeration and movement of fluids, sedimentational solids. And people don't go into these tanks. They're mostly controlled from the surface. We do have a couple of buildings that house some equipment, blowers and pumps and thickeners. And so periodically, we have to go in to make sure that they are working. These visits that our maintenance staff have to make are very short-lived. They really are limited to if anything breaks down. So the structure that, the only structure that would house people for a considerable period of time is our locker room and shower room building. Our staff has to change their clothes in the morning. They have to wear the proper clothing for the environment they're working in. And at the end of every day, they have to leave those clothes at the district to be taken by a professional outfit that would clean them. And they always change the clothes with a new set of clothing every morning. And they shower and clean themselves up before they go home. And so it's a, it's a building that also offers room for them to have their lunches and some meetings and a place for them to go in during the breaks. So we understand this is a building that really houses more people, people, a greater number of hours, if you will, during the day. But the rest of the structures are strictly treatment structures. They're, as Mark classified them, industrial in nature. So, so from the standpoint of the design, we're certainly going to be working with the structures, with the building department, to make sure that wherever there is a need for a building permit, those structures will be designed in accordance with the California Building Code, specifically chapter 1613 as written in condition 52. As far as the archaeology goes, we've done quite a bit of work, as was explained by Mark and Joyce. And certainly, we thank the county archaeologist. In fact, the, Mr. Russell himself was also involved in a, in a couple of meetings in which the work plan was addressed and reviewed by him. the work plan was addressed and reviewed by him as well and Joyce. We did have several meetings, I would say a couple of meetings, with members and representatives of the Chumash. We've invited several to attend these meetings, and I think a couple showed up. We did the, what is known as the 106 consultation, which is a requirement, a federal requirement. We also had very intimate contact with the state archaeologist who was in on the project right from the very beginning. And the representatives of the Chumash Reservation have actually agreed with our approach. They've actually been satisfied, in fact, they've written us emails advising, advising us that the plan and the consultation we did with them was acceptable. Nevertheless, I think we're, we want to, in Area 2, as was clearly indicated, we want to make sure that we're not going to run into anything that we might have missed. While we did a very good grid of cores and geoprobes that are separated by about 30 feet from each other, and we had a geomorphologist on the site, I think this additional work will secure and ensure that if anything is missed, then we will work with it at that time. I think that we have a very qualified archaeologist, and he will be working in conjunction with the county archaeologist as well on this issue. But not only have we done field investigation with respect to archaeology, there's another important element that we have, we have done throughout the project. We, I'm not an archaeologist, and I got my 101 archaeology from our archaeologist aunt from the county archaeologist and from people around that have taught me about this. And one of the things they said, if you can avoid disruptions, then by all means do that. And we did that. We actually went back and we made changes to our design. For example, we had a couple of big tanks that we were going to build in Area 2 next to that proposed recycling filter. And when we did the geo-probing, we found out that that area had potentially additional resources there that we need to worry about. And so what we did then, we decided to abandon those tanks and not build them anymore, and we substituted the design with a mechanical unit that will be housed in a building. So we won't have to disrupt the site, we won't have to do any unnecessary disruption in excavation. We also realigned our pipes. We changed the design to realign our pipes so we do not plow into virgin ground. We decided to put our new pipes within existing corridors. And where there was a new one, we did the geo-probing, and as this picture shows, it basically, there are a couple of trenches that are along the alignment of the pipeline, which is a new pipeline there. So we've accommodated this by design changes as well, rather than just field investigation. And I think the monitoring condition that you have, that staff has proposed and that we are very willingly going to do, in addition to this additional work in the specific area that there could be additional resources, would ensure that we would be able to comply with your requirements and satisfy that particular sensitive issue. On the question of soil being taken from there, we have an option of keeping it on Site 2. I mean, there is that potential option of spreading it in some areas, and if that is the case, then certainly the archaeologist is going to be there that will be able to see it. But if it's taken elsewhere, then I don't think it's, it'll be a problem for him to go out there and take a look at what you suggested. I just want to say that we have a timeline that we need to comply with, with respect to the Regional Board, in terms of building this project. We are, we have basically what we call a settlement agreement with them that prescribes a timeline for us to proceed with this work. We are very much interested in moving on because the bidding environment is very favorable these days. We could realize up to perhaps 40% savings on a project of that nature that the community in Galida would really benefit from. And so we are hoping that we can proceed with this and try to get into some construction this summer. We still have other permits to acquire. We are in concurrence with the conditions that you have on the project. We think that we can comply with them without a problem. So with that, I would say thank you very much, and we look forward to having you approve the recommendations that are made by your staff. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Mr. Azuri. Commissioner Cooney.
With respect to the outfall pipe, is there just one that leaves the site and goes out into the ocean?
Yes, yes.
And that pipe crosses this known Moore Ranch Fault? Does that intersect?
That is an existing pipe that potentially, I guess it does, yes. But it's been there for, since 1964.
If there was an incident on that fault and the pipe were breached at that point, what would be the nature, the typical nature of the contents of the pipe?
Actually, it would be fully secondary treated wastewater. Well, I shouldn't call it wastewater, I should call it purified secondary treated water at that point, which would be very well disinfected. And I should indicate that we've done, for many, many years, testing of our final effluent as it is even today with respect to the bacterial content and the native water in the slough, and we found that our effluent is a significant number of folds cleaner than what you're seeing coming down the slough. We have these numbers, we can show them to you. So to the extent that if it breaks and there is any flow into the slough, the nature of that effluent would be cleaner than the surrounding water, especially even though now with the full secondary treatment.
Yes, yes, that's, I hope you'd say just that, thank you.
Well, we are.
Just one last question for you. The building in which you deploy shower and lunch, is just the addition of a second floor, is it not? It's not a new building?
It is an existing building.
Right.
And what we are doing is making it a two-story
Yes.
Building. So we are taking, actually we're essentially demolishing the entire building
Oh, are you?
And then we're building within the, within the same footprint, we're just building a new structure. Our structural engineers have indicated it's just not worth going into a building that old and start doing all this remodeling. It's a lot cheaper to just build it right from the beginning.
Okay, that's good, okay, great.
And it's going to provide more space, it's going to take a little bit pressure off our existing administration building by providing more space for meetings for the staff in that building.
I'm, just one last question. In the negative, mitigated declaration, it discussed, it said the appendices, and appendices F and G were the public comments. And I, there weren't, I didn't get any or I didn't see any appendices about public comments. I'm wondering if you had any public comments and what those might have been?
We really didn't have any public comments per se on your, on your CDP. We did have one letter from Heal the Ocean
Okay.
On the mitigated, negative declaration, and they were supportive of the, of the work that we had done.
Good, okay, well, that's, that's nice to hear. And just one last question, how many agencies regulate you?
Let's see. We are regulated by primarily EPA, which is enforcing the Clean Water Act. We're regulated by the State Water Resources Control Board that represents EPA. We have the Regional Water Quality Control Board that represents the State Board locally. Of course, we're regulated by the Air Resources Board, we're regulated by the Department of Fish and Game in some areas, and then we have all of the regulations with OSHA. I'm sure I'm, State Health Department, I'm sure that there may be some that I'm missing, but we are very heavily regulated. It's just a kind of one of the business that we, we have grown to get used to in terms of how do we perform on a daily basis. I can assure you, we monitor our effluent daily, and we monitor our disinfection process every instant, instantaneously. We do sampling and monitoring daily, weekly, we go out to the ocean and we do ocean sampling. And that's what Kathleen's staff in the lab do that. So, and we have to submit reports to the Regional Board monthly, and we have to do an extensive ocean program, biodegradation studies and muscle watches and a lot of stuff that we have. We probably have the largest database of oceanographic information anywhere in the state.
Interesting.
And if I may close and say that our agency and our facility has been, is an exemplary facility, we have actually been selected to be the best facility in the state of California by our peers on many, many occasions. So we take pride in what we do. And I can only thank my dedicated staff and the well-informed governing board that we have in allowing us to carry this mission.
Thank you very much
Thank you.
For your presentation. We'll open up the public comment portion, and do we have any speaker slips? I have, yeah, we have no additional speaker slips, any from South County? No. Okay, then I'll close that portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for questions. Any other questions? All right, then for deliberations.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Brooks.
Oh.
Excuse me, you'll be next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the presentation today by the applicant and by staff. I know in the Lompoc Valley, we have gone through a similar process with the updating of our community wastewater treatment plant. I have a relative who visits that plant frequently, and he'll often say, would you like to come see the wastewater treatment plant? And I've many times said, oh, no, thank you, no, thank you. And after plowing through today's report, now I regret I didn't take him up on that visitation. I know that these upgrades are necessary, they are being state mandated, many communities, including the Lompoc Valley, you know, have undergone and we are paying for these updates. But yes, they are, you know, very, very necessary. I did have some concern, you know, about the seismic studies, and, but I feel that as it was explained to me today and with the added conditions, that these will be addressed. The cultural resources, I think some of the questions and the comments that were made today helped me to understand that, you know, the conditions again, you know, should satisfy, you know, any concerns that I or the public, you know, would have on that. One thing that I was thinking about as we were discussing the cultural resources, just last week, we discussed Galida Beach 2.0, and with your proximity to the beach and some of the plans that they have, you know, for if they, say, improve the beach and having, adding an educational component to that, it might be a wonderful segue or opportunity for collaboration, you know, as you do your archaeological studies. And I knew nothing about Hilo, and I think that would be a great opportunity, you know, at Galida Beach to bring this in. We have a great public benefit here, we're going to, as you say, go from, you know, total secondary treatment, so we're looking at cleaner water. This will help, you know, the community in the Galida Valley. I am ready to support and listen to my colleagues, and thank you.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. About 40 years ago, I was involved with a regional plant in Lompoc, I was on the City Council at the time, so I'm about 90 years old, as you can see. But I remember the amount of regulation, it was unbelievable. And one of the things that I always remember is that they said, no, when the water comes out of this processing plant, we're going to have primary and secondary cleansing, or, yeah, I forget what the other word was, instead of cleansing, says, this water is clean enough to drink, but we could never get anybody to drink it. My concern is, we always tried to get reinjection of that water back upstream, and I don't know if it ever occurred over the next 45 years. Your water, after it's been cleansed, are you reinjection or does it go out to the ocean? My only question.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Valencia, we actually have a part of our final effluent that goes to the recycling facility, and then it's being used for landscape irrigation at the Galida Beach, at the university, and all of the Gulf courses to the west of our facility.
Thank you very much, very good use, good planning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, thank you. Commissioner Blau, any? No, all right. Commissioner Cooney.
Madam Chair, I appreciate, we're just one tiny review authority in what is a heavily regulated site, and I appreciate more than ever Mr. Azuri's comment that this probably isn't the best site for the Galida Sanitation District. But given that it's there, and particularly with the history of construction around one of the really historic, prehistoric sites, I just want to be sure that everything is done, that can be done, to correctly characterize and to handle with great care the excavations that are done on this site. So I'm glad to hear it's all been worked out with excellent archaeology and the planning, but the real truth will be in the further exploration to come, and I, certain staff will be very interested participants in that stage as well. So given that comfort, I'm willing to support the project as conditioned.
Right, thank you. I would just like to ask one question of staff, and that is that I would like the Commission to ask for the reduction in the transportation fee, and I'm not sure how, how that's done or in what format.
Madam Chair, the Transportation Division actually has already
Oh, they've already done that?
Granted that
Oh, okay, great.
They would reduce the fee.
Oh, okay.
And the fee is paid at a specific time in the process.
Okay, fabulous, okay, that's, that's great, thank you. Well, in that case, you know, I too support this, and I'm, you know, I'm a Galida Sanitary District customer, so I see on my tax bill, I was going, how much has it gone up this year? But after having been to the plant and seeing how very careful and how very thorough they have been in the review of this project, I'm in total support of what they're trying to do. And I realize that, as Commissioner Cooney said, we are but a very, very small part of their regulatory overview. So I'm, I encourage, if the district is going to have an open house this year for people to go, even Commissioners to go, because it's really quite an interesting experience to go there. And the staff have done quite a nice job of trying to maintain this complex so it doesn't look like an industrial facility, and I'm very much appreciative of that. I think it adds to the ambiance of the whole Galida Beach area and the sense of open space that we have in that portion of our community. So with that said, then I would, Ms. Black? Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I think we just need one clarification
Okay.
And that is if you wanted to amend the work program as you had indicated earlier in your comments, we do have some language.
Do you, I think just based upon Mr. Azuri's comments that they may, some of that export may be on-site, I don't think we need to do that. So I appreciate your thinking of that, but.
Then, Madam Chair, if your intention is to support staff's recommendation
Yes.
I would recommend that you just move staff's recommendation amended by the April 8th memo from staff.
Okay.
The revisions presented by staff in the PowerPoint slides today, and the change to the SEQA finding is presented by County Council.
Okay, and that will be my motion. Thank you for helping me make. Thank you for helping me make it.
I'll second it.
All right, second. And let me call for the question, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good, good. Motion carries and thank you very much for a great project, thank you, staff. And onward, Galita Sanitary District with all your compliance and permitting. Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Number two into the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Frances Romero of Urban Planning Concepts, agent for property owner Western Sky Communities LLC for initiation of a general plan amendment 09 GPA 5 application filed May 1st, 2009.
Thank you. Any further expertise or site visit disclosures? Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had three phone calls, two from Frances Romero concerning the project and one from Lori Tomora and I must say, I spent probably an hour and a half talking to them, so they're very concerned about this project and that's all.
Okay. Ms. Brooks.
Yes, Madam Chair, I also had two phone calls from Ms. Romero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And to Ms. Carmichael, our staff planner, for her presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This is the hearing for the Terrace Ranch General Plan Amendment and this project was last seen by your commission on January 20th, 2010, where it was continued for additional project analysis. So, to review again, the project site is located south of Clark Avenue and west of Highway 101 and immediately south of the Town and Country Mobile Home Park in the Orchid area. An access to the site is provided via Stillwell Road and Clark Avenue. The project site is currently zoned, designed residential with 3.3 units allowed per acre. All projects located in this zoned district are subject to the processing and approval of a development plan, reviewed by the Board of Architectural Review, and there's a requirement for 40% common open space onsite. Zoned districts in the immediate vicinity of the project site include planned residential development, Mobile Home Park and 10R1 residential. The land use designation for the project site area is currently residential eight units per acre. All surrounding properties have residential land use designations, however, the density ranges widely from a low of one unit per acre to a high of 12.3 units per acre. The Terrace Ranch tract map was approved for this site by the board on April 12th, 1994 and it recorded on April 18th, 2008. The 5.39 acre site has been legally divided into twenty separate parcels, seventeen of which may be developed with single-family residences. As you can see, the map does contain irregularly shaped lots of various sizes. At the January 20th hearing, the project description included the request for a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from residential eight to residential 4.6 and a subsequent rezone from DR 3.3, which is designed residential, to a residential zoning of 7R1. After reviewing the proposed project, staff determined that the project could not be found to be in the public interest as it would have resulted in the loss of designated open space, minimal design review requirements and inconsistency with comprehensive plan Since the last commission hearing, the applicants met with staff and have revised the project description. The request now includes a general plan amendment to change the current land use designation from residential eight to residential 4.6 and a subsequent rezone from DR 3.3 to small lot plan development, which is known as SLP. The intent of the SLP zone district is to provide housing opportunities which meet the needs of the community and to promote high standards of site planning, architecture and landscaping. The SLP zone district requires design review and a minimum of 15% of the site to be set aside as open space area. The current proposal includes open space area equivalent to approximately 19% of the site. The open space areas are located along Stillwell Road, along the southern property line adjacent to the existing single-family residences and in the southwest corner. The open space area located in the southwest corner of the site would include a tot lot for two- to five-year-old children, a barbecue pit, picnic tables with benches and also a seating area for people to enjoy views of the Solomon Hills to the south. A portion of this area would also be utilized as a stormwater retardation basin. The grading associated with the revised project is 35,634 cubic yards of cut, 26,199 cubic yards of fill and excess cut of 9,434 cubic yards, which would be balanced over the site. Although the proposed grading amounts are still higher than the recorded Terrace Ranch tract map, the preliminary grading plan has been designed to take into account the existing topography of the site and it allows for a more uniform subdivision design. In order to recommend initiation of general plan amendments to decision-makers, staff must be able to make the finding that the proposed GPA is in the public interest. The proposed project has been redesigned to include recreational open space amenities, which are not included in the recorded Terrace Ranch tract map. In addition, the redesigned map includes landscape buffer areas, improved access from Stillwell Road and a more uniform site design with adequate parking. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the request to initiate the general plan amendment and that concludes my presentation. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? All right, if there are none, I'll turn it over to the applicant and Ms. Tomora.
Good morning. My name is Lori Tomora with Urban Planning Concepts and I have here with me today the applicants, Eric Diaz and the Tesharis, who have brought this project forward. Also, we have Russ Garrison, the civil engineer, and Frances Romero, our senior planner in our office, who's been working on this project. We really appreciate the opportunity to come back to you with a revised project and request. We have worked diligently with Dana and other staff members in flood control and roads division in regards to the design of this alternative scenario. I'd like to go quickly through our presentation to remind you of some of the points that we brought forward previously as well as refer to you to our presentation materials that you each had a copy of as well as a requested change to the project, which is the 11 by 17s that you have in front of you. Could you go ahead and move it on? This is more of a blow-up of the site, again, the Mobile Home Park, Town and Country and Sunny Hills, Jensen's Crossing and Cobblestone Creek are located in this area and then there's some residential lots below. Go ahead. Project is located with this designation on it and also you can see how the other planned development properties are located throughout the site with a lower density below and Mobile Home Park above. The zoning designation currently is the DR 3.3 and again, that requires cluster developments, 40% open space and architectural review. Currently, there's, this project fits within the Orchid Community Plan. This was Key Site 5, Key Site 6, 7, Rice Ranch is down here and Harp Springs. There were some questions in regards to public amenities in the previous hearing. Want to point out that immediately south of this project, a community park has been built as a condition of Key Site 5. Bike trail system has been established along here and also along the Harp Springs area. There's a major park at Rice Ranch and quite a bit of trail system through Mesa Verde that ultimately will be connecting to Rice Ranch. So, there are a number of public amenities that have been established over the last couple of years in this area. Again, the original project that was recorded had a density of eight units per acre with a DR 3.3, potentially up to 40 units per acre, was ultimately approved with 17. Average lot size was 6,000 square feet, smallest lots were in the 3, 3,600 square feet provisions. The proposal that we brought forward to you last month had 17 lots and our average lot size was 8,000 square feet, smallest lots at 6,000 going up to almost 10. Go ahead. This is the recorded map with the lots embedded and built along the hillside. There was a cluster of small units here with a little private driveway. You can see the amounts of slopes, there was retaining walls along most of these and this is the basin area. Most of the open space was in a terraced slope pattern down the hill. Again, there's the emergency access extension here as well as one of the houses had a driveway right off of Stillwell Road and then you had the main driveway kind of cattywankered off of the Cobblestone driveway. Go ahead. This is illustrating how the driveways were coming right out next to this existing home and coming right out of the driveway from Cobblestone. Go ahead. Again, this details the retaining wall system that was proposed with this project and you have series of retaining walls from five to six feet, five to nine, or five to nine feet and then a series of other retaining walls. And this again is the basin with no recreational amenities in it. Some of the other elements of the project included that the original project didn't take into account how much grading was going to be done for the paths themselves and the driveways and quite a few retaining walls throughout the site and manufactured slopes and removal of trees. Go ahead, yeah. The open space requirement, even though it was a DR 4.6 units per acre or 3.3 units per acre, the calculation for open space was a little off because they used the private roads as part of the calculation for that. So, the real green space was only 30% of the total area and so our project does have 19%, so we're a little closer to what was previously approved. Go ahead. Dana already went through these calculations. I think it's important to note that initially when this project was approved, there was very little grading information provided and we built off of that information and ultimately realized that this is an interesting project and a lot of grading is involved. So, the planning commission asked for a couple of considerations in the previous hearing, looking at the opportunity for some additional open space and usable open space rather than just a basin on the site, work more on the grading and add some definition in regards to the road itself. So, this is what you saw last time, the basin was located here, the lots all extended to the south property line and the road was just a straight shot through. These benches in the lots were five-foot benches, again, trying to work the lots down the hillside. Go ahead. So, what we did here is we did a little bit of a wow in the road, moved the cul-de-sac to the south, so you actually have a little bit of a cattywanker in the road and gave more of the open space as a buffer to the neighbor to the south and this basin, which, if you can go to the next one. We have, this is our basin right here and this is the little park staging area, viewing point that we can look south to the Solomon Hills and the creek and then we have the slope is going to be maintained in permanent landscaping and buffered to the south. And as Dana pointed out, this is our basin complex with the community park here, or this park, viewing area, which I think is really a nice asset to this property and then a little barbecue area and play equipment and then, that's fine. One of the concerns that came up previously also was in regards to parking and so we added some details on this. Of course, every house will have at least a two-car garage, two cars in the driveway and then street parking, which we got 28 parking spaces. I'd like to refer your planning commission to the 8 and 1/2 by 11s that we provided. In our discussion yesterday with Commissioner Valencia, there was concerns that this particular design still did not adequately provide for parking and so over the evening yesterday, we designed an alternate plan that extended this cul-de-sac further and we eliminated a lot and then added additional parking in that cul-de-sac so that we now have 38 on-street parking spaces, one less lot, 38 parking spaces on-street and each lot has six available parking spaces through onsite and offsite parking. Go ahead, Dana. We wanted to point out that in a lot of the projects now, where we do have retaining walls, we work with a open fencing plan so that it does provide the privacy, but still you can see through it to take advantage of the views and that would be incorporated throughout the wall systems that we do build on this property. And we wanted to illustrate some of the successful projects that have been done with the step lot pattern. This is Harp Springs, which is under construction right now. Your uphill lots have a two-story element to it and then you have a single-story element in the back working the step in the wall. And here is a one-story element, but the back is a two-story as you fall down the hill. One of the other elements that we wanted to point out is that the previous project was approved with standard street lights, the Cobra heads and we would be incorporating more decorative, lower element lighting in our project. And then we did talk a little bit about how trash would be staged here because you end up with five lots at the end here that are all trying to bring their trash out to this cul-de-sac, whereas in the redesign, we'd have adequate frontage for all of the lots for the pickup. So, we did do a survey of the neighborhood, we met with Cobblestone Creek and we also talked with the neighbors to the south. We did provide a petition last meeting for those that were in support of our requested change and we just wanted to highlight the location of those people that did sign the petition. Those are the ones that are immediately impacted by the proposed change of this project. And so, we ran through just the elements that we talked about previously, the benefits of a change. Dana did include those elements in her presentation and we are pleased to provide this alternative layout for the project and hope that the commission would consider a favorable action. There was one other question that did come up through the discussions yesterday with commissioners, a clarification on the housing provision. When this project was recorded two years ago, the family went ahead and paid the in-lug fee and so that's already been covered as part of the original project, so there was not going to be onsite affordable units on this property. I believe I've covered most of the points that were raised. Again, we did provide to you an alternative as a 16-lot presentation. This is very late in the game, but again, I was trying to address commissioners' questions and concerns. We did go over that with the family this morning and were, they are supportive of bringing a 16-unit project before you rather than the 17. And so, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
And again, we have our team here if there's anything else.
Thank you. Any commissioner questions? Ms. Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I did bring up an issue in my conversation, you know, with Ms. Romero about affordability and, you know, some affordable housing and I was informed then that these in-lug fees were paid. However, when the first project came in to us, there were affordable units in there. Could, do you explain to me?
When the project was-
Can't do both.
Yeah, thank you.
Could do both, I guess.
Commissioner Brooks, when the original project was submitted back in 95, there was a small apartment building on that site and that was going to be the affordable units. They were going to keep that project, that building on there and it was originally planned to be low-income housing. I believe there was, was kind of a little, what do you call, auto court building and since that time, obviously, it was determined to tear it down because of the condition of the building. And then the alternate plan, where that building was located, there are those four skinny lots in that originally recorded map, but it was at that time when the map was changed is when they agreed to do the in-lug fees rather than have the affordable units. It's a long history on this project.
Okay, I have some questions. On your proposed, which we received this morning, there will be sidewalks throughout the length of the project?
Correct.
Okay. And I appreciate we're- Okay, and I appreciate we're switching back and forth between what you provided in your PowerPoint and what we have here. Driveway lengths, the driveway lengths will be long enough so that the cars will not hang over onto the sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. Lighting, your PowerPoint, the lighting that you proposed for street lighting is really not, it may be decorative, but it's not really sufficient for lighting the street, and I don't know whether or not that's part of design review, or Ms. Black?
Madam Chair, if I can just interrupt for a moment. I just want to remind the commission that what we're here for today is to initiate a general plan amendment or comprehensive plan amendment, and you will see this project again if you do that. So, I don't think you have to go through all the details. It's fine to highlight issues that you want them to look at, but...
All right, good. Well, I think she knows my concerns. Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Valencia, any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I wanted to hear from my fellow commissioners. How can I be sure that this plan that you have submitted as the preliminary 11 by 17 will be in the development plan if we go forward with the general plan amendment? Say we were to go forward with the general plan amendment, the general plan amendment that's before us is, has another picture in it for the project, but this has been substituted, which I appreciate. How do I, how can I be sure that this would be, go forward?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Valencia, you can't. What you're doing today, or what you're being asked to do today is simply to initiate a general plan amendment.
And it could change.
So, it could change today, tomorrow, and the next day, but I think what you're hearing is the applicant's intent, and, you know, we would be processing this, you know, immediately, so the commission would certainly remember what they intended for them to do, but this is really just a very early stage in the process.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Black?
I was just going to point out, we're not approving this project today. All we're doing is authorizing the staff to accept money from this property owner so that they can go forward and process this project. There's going to be lots of issues that we're going to want to review, and there's no guarantee that the future planning commission is going to approve this project if it comes back exactly like we see in the 11 by 17s. So, let's not get into too much detail. I think it's important to give Mr. Moore our comments, so if there's anything that's blazingly objectionable about this, you might want to know about it now before you spend the tens of thousands of dollars to bring this project back to us, but I think I captured the essence of that.
Thank you for that clarity. Okay, if, no further commissioners' comments or questions, excuse me, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, Madam Chair, I guess I'll address this perhaps to staff. In several, I think in about two months, we're going to be looking at an updated or some revisions to the Orkut Community Plan. Could you give me, you know, the status of that, and how would this relate to that?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, I don't believe that the changes to the Orkut Community Plan that you'll be looking at really address this particular area at all. I think they mainly focus on Old Town Orkut and some provisions in the plan that need to be cleaned up following a lawsuit, so I don't think that this particular property would be affected by those.
Okay, if, thank you. If there are no further questions, then I'll open up the public comment portion. Do I have any speakers, no speaker slips? Okay, then I'll close the public comment portion and the public hearing and return it to the commission for either further questions, and if none, then deliberations. Commissioner Valencia?
Madam Chair, when this plan initially came to us, we all had a lot of problems with it, and the commission was ready to turn this application down, but at my request, we had a continuation see if the members of the project could come up with something else, and apparently they had. At this point, I'm prepared to go forward with the amendment. I find that this project is in the best interest of the community, and I hope that my fellow commissioners find the same. And with that, turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'm, I was in favor of the project before we saw it last time, and I do think it's actually a better project now, so I commend Commissioner Valencia for his intervention or his help in getting this, if you change. I do want to make one comment for Commissioner Brooks' benefits about the affordable housing and the in-lut fees. Although we have still not seen the revised elements of the housing plan that deal with this, the board, a couple of years ago, had a housing committee that was developed, or an ad hoc committee, and one of the recommendations that they came up with, which the board subsequently endorsed, was this issue of we would rather have in-lut fees than we would have dispersed affordable housing, simply because the county is much, is much able, are able to much better leverage that money through a rental program rather than simply doing affordable housing. It lasts longer, it's more permanent, and it actually helps more people. So, I'm glad to see we don't have the affordable element in here. I'm glad to see they paid the in-lut fees because we get a much bigger bang for our buck. I'll also comment that in the original plan that was approved was what I call the classic example, where we get a landowner or a property owner that in order to enhance the value of their property goes out and gets entitlements, and they do it in the easiest, simplest way, and don't pay much attention to actually what they're constructing. The earlier plan, I think, is one of the poorest I've seen. I saw this three years ago because someone brought it to me to want to try and sell it to me, and I looked at it and I said, "You've got to be kidding me." I mean, this thing made no sense whatsoever, but I could see where the prior owner had no intention whatsoever of developing this. They just wanted to put a map on it, parcelize it to increase the value. And I think what we're seeing here is a well-thought-out plan that makes sense, and I believe this project will actually be developed. And I also encourage you to, one of the things that I really disliked about the existing plan, as Mr. Moore pointed out, was the really poorly-aligned entrance to the road across the street. That was an accident waiting to happen, and it should have never been approved, and I don't think it would be today. I think if we saw that plan today, the original one, we would not approve it. So, I'm real happy to see this plan come back to us and hope they go forward and bring it back to us and they can actually build it. So, I'm ready to support it. Thanks, gentlemen.
If there are no other commissioner comments, back to you, Commissioner Valencia.
All right, and with that, Madam Chair, thank you very much for the comments from my fellow commissioners. Did you have a comment? You're looking at...
I would like to comment before we go to vote. Are we ready to...
Well, he'll make the motion. We'll move it back for discussion unless you'd like to make that now.
Okay, I'll wait until the motion is made. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we proceed with the general plan amendment for this project and initiation, and that's it for you.
Well, second to that.
Okay, now, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. At our last hearing for this, I have to say, I do like what I've seen, and I discussed this when I spoke to Ms. Romero. I think the design is much improved. I kept coming back to the idea of a general plan amendment. I take those very, very seriously, and, you know, we, if I can see that, you know, there's this great public benefit that I, as the commissioner, could vote to support the initiation of the general plan amendment, you know, I think I would, you know, I would, I would go in that direction. However, I guess I still, I still don't see it. The tot lot is attractive, the idea, it would be small, it probably would be open to the public. Liability issues, again, that was something that would have to be taken care of later on. There is more open space. I mean, if we go back to the original Orkut Plan and the way it is zoned currently, it's requiring 40% open space. Okay, now we're up to, I believe, 19% open space, which, you know, is a move in the right direction. However, the design where the open space is that little sliver behind some of the homes, again, who's benefiting from that? I think the neighbors next to it might benefit because it's pulling the yards away, you know, from those existing homes, but, you know, for kind of a holistic public benefit, you know, it's not there for me. I was very, you know, pleased to hear that the in-lut fees have been paid, and, you know, I accept that. You know, sometimes, you know, I would like to see, you know, some affordable units. I don't think this entire area, you know, has, you know, you have the mobile home park up the hill, but within the new developments, I don't think there are any existing affordable units. I think it's all been, you know, in-lut fees, and if that's the choice and the preference, you know, that is okay. I'm just, I just, I just don't see it yet for the, for me to make that judgment, you know, to make a, an amendment to the plan. The Orkut Plan, you know, was decided upon by the community years of input, and perhaps that's the way they wanted it at that time. That was the map that was recorded. I just, again, I'm questioning, you know, how much of a public benefit do we have yet? And if we ever could on this one, I don't know. It's such a constrained site. I know that's, that's a difficulty, but I will go along with my commissioners and see how.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I feel a little bit different than Commissioner Brooks. I didn't agree with her quite completely at the last hearing, but I do believe this project as currently configured creeps over the edge and allows me to vote in favor of initiation. With respect to general plan amendments, I do think they're, they're very important to pay attention to in terms of the creation of area-wide open space and facilities and all the rest, and this will be very much on my mind, how this project integrates into what is built around it, when and if this project comes back to us. But I do think that we have to be a little bit flexible with general plans. I know the general plan, area plan, in my area, it was as much work as was put in on it, it's always subject to being improved, and so if this project improves rather than takes away from the goals of the, of the Orkut Community Plan, then it would be worthy of our support, but we'll have a chance to vote on that down the line. So, in terms of initiation, I think I can go along with Commissioner Valencia's motion.
You know, it's, it's interesting. I know we're not here to approve the proposed revision that we've seen today, but it certainly does go a long way in furthering what an idea for a project might be, and I'm certainly in support of that. I think, design-wise, for the community, it's far superior to what was originally proposed in the Orkut Community Plan. Things do change over time, and I think that if those good people who were so involved in the Orkut Community Plan would have had a chance to really consider what was being proposed, they'd see that it wasn't probably really very practical. So, I do think that there's, that if the, when this project returns to the commission and it is of something of this design, I think that it'll receive great support. But with that said, I have a long memory, and if I'm on the commission, then I'll look forward to seeing something like this. Anyway, Commissioner Valencia's put forth a proposal. We've had a second, and Ms. Rodriguez, would you call the question, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia?
Yes.
Commissioner Blau?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, great. We'll take a five-minute break to set up for the next project. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following is the hearing on the request of Tish Beltranina of M&amp;S Engineers, Inc., agent for Sweeney Canyon LLC, owner to consider the following. A 09 RZN-4 application filed on February 25, 2009. B 09 DVP-5 application filed on February 25, 2009, to adopt the negative declaration 10 NGD-2 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of CEQA.
Great, thank you. And ex parte and site visit disclosures, please. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I visited the site on Sunday.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, and I also visited the site on Sunday.
Commissioner Blau?
Seen the site some time ago.
Okay, and I visited the site on Friday. Okay, with that, Ms. Carmichael, the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. This is the hearing for the Sweeney Canyon Consistency Rezone and Development Plan. Before I begin my presentation, I would like to mention that the applicants have notified staff that there have been unforeseen delays with installation of the vineyards on the project site. And the applicants are proposing to have two and a half acres of vineyard planted by April 30th. So, therefore, staff is requesting that the commission allow the project to move forward with a hearing today and then continue the item to the May 12, 2010 hearing, when it can be verified that the two and a half acres of vineyard has been installed. And then, in addition, you should have received a memo dated with today's date that includes revisions to the staff report and findings for approval, two additional findings for approval for the project. Okay. The project site is located at 2050 Sweeney Road, approximately one mile east of the city of Lompoc, and 600 feet approximately southeast of Highway 246 in the Lompoc area. And this aerial photo depicts Highway 246 to the northwest. The San Ynez River is located to the southwest, and all development associated with the proposed project would be set back at a minimum of 200 feet from the top of bank of the San Ynez River. Parcels located to the north, south, and east of the project site are Zone 40 AG and are primarily developed with low-intensity agricultural uses and single-family dwellings. The Bridge House Homeless Shelter is located north of the project site, and this shelter is owned and operated by the Lompoc Housing Community Development Committee, and the hours of operation of the shelter are 5:00 PM to 9:00 AM. And the subject parcel is currently developed with a 2,300-square-foot single-family dwelling, which is located here, and here's a picture of that, and a 3,042-square-foot barn, which is located here, and there's a picture of the barn, and also a 2,400-square-foot agricultural storage shed, which is located here, and there's a picture of the storage shed. The proposed project would take access off of Sweeney Road, and this is a picture of Sweeney Road looking west from the edge of the project site towards Highway 246. And this is another picture of Sweeney Road looking from Highway 246 east towards the project site, and the county road yard is actually located to the right of this picture. In order to be approved, the proposed winery project would require a consistency rezone. The subject 10.04-acre parcel is non-conforming to size and is currently zoned general agriculture 40-acre minimum lot area pursuant to ordinance 661. Surrounding properties primarily contain a land use designation of A240 and are zoned 40 AG and 100 AG, also under ordinance 661. In order to be consistent with the current land use and development code, the zoning map is proposed to be amended to Ag 240 with a 40-acre minimum lot size, and it would remain non-conforming as to size. The proposed project includes a development plan to construct a new Tier III winery consisting of two buildings totaling approximately 21,500 square feet with a maximum height of 41 feet. Upon completion, the winery would produce a maximum of 10,000 cases annually. The applicants are proposing to conduct public wine tasting within Building B and are requesting approval to hold 10 special events per year with a maximum of 100 attendees per event on the 10-acre parcel. And approximately 27,500 cubic foot irrigation pond, it's actually noted on the site plan as a stored water pond, is proposed along the western edge of the site, and that pond would provide filtered water for fire suppression and also irrigation to the vineyards. The existing single-family residence and the barn would remain, and the agricultural storage building would be relocated to the southern end of the site, and it's shown, I think, as three on the, yeah, three on that site plan. These are the most current proposed elevations for winery buildings... These are the most current proposed elevations for winery buildings A and B, and the North Board of Architectural Review conceptually reviewed this project on March 27, 2009, and the project is conditioned to require final VAR approval prior to zoning clearance The preliminary landscape plan includes primarily native plants, which would be planted adjacent to winery buildings A and B in parking areas and along the northeast and northwest property lines. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project, and it was circulated for a public review for 30 days through the State Clearing House. This document is included as Attachment C in the staff report. The subject parcel is located within a high-fire hazard area of the county, so in order to ensure for adequate fire protection, the mitigated negative declaration includes a mitigation measure, which requires fire-resistant native plant species within 50 feet of the development. And also, the landscape plan would have to be reviewed and approved by the county fire department prior to occupancy clearance. Since the proposed winery includes public wine tasting and special events, the land use development code requires setbacks of 200 feet to an adjacent lot and 400 feet from the nearest single-family residence located on an adjacent lot. The land use development code states that setbacks may be reduced by the review authority, provided that there is not a feasible way to meet the required setbacks without creating a significant environmental impact or impacting prime agricultural land, and also that the reduction in setback would not adversely affect neighboring properties. In addition to requests for setback reductions, the applicants are requesting to conduct special events on the 10.04-acre parcel. Currently, the land use development code requires a 20-acre minimum area to hold a special event, but decision-makers can make a finding that based upon the character of the area and the access and the type of special event proposed, that a 20-acre winery premises site area is unnecessary. So in this case, the proposed winery would be set back approximately 113 feet from the county road yard, which is located to the northwest, and that's approximately 87 feet less than the required setback of 200 feet. The nearest existing off-site single-family residence is located approximately 300 feet south, which is 100 feet less than the 400-foot requirement. The project site is located adjacent to the San Inez River, and in order to minimize impacts to the river, the project was required to have that minimum setback of 200 feet from the top of bank of the river. And in addition, all crushing and processing activities would occur inside the winery buildings or in covered outdoor areas, and those areas would have adequate buffers, including buildings, landscaping, and also planted vineyard. The land use development code allows Tier 3 wineries to conduct 12 annual special events with a maximum of 200 people. The proposed project is requesting 10 events with a maximum of 100 people, or 100 attendees. And the type of special events that would occur as part of the project includes private parties, wine tastings, and luncheons. And the project site would be able to provide adequate access and parking areas in order to serve the special events, and no parking would be allowed along Sweeney Road. The special events would be conducted on weekends only between the hours of 11:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and any amplified music associated with an event would be required to cease by 6:00 PM. The proposed project conforms with county policies to promote agricultural uses, expansion, and intensification, and it would comply with all of the applicable requirements in the Ag 240 Zone District. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the board supervisors to make the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including CEQA findings, adopt the Negative Declaration and mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, and adopt the rezone ordinance included as Attachment D, and also approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment B. And I would also like to mention, there is one other small correction I'd like to make to the staff report, and that's on page 15, under Ag Element Policies. And it, on the, the second sentence should read, "The construction of the proposed winery would not substantially hinder or diminish the agricultural capabilities or potential for the subject parcel." So, thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up to commissioners' questions, I just want to make the announcement that item number four, the Russell Ranch Tentative Parcel Map, we will hear after lunch. So if there's anybody in the audience here for that, we probably won't hear it until after 1:00. Thank you. All right, back to commissioners' questions. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I was going to ask that this item be continued for another couple of weeks, but that, I guess the staff is already asking for that, so I won't be asking for that. The city of Lompoc has its water wells along the, the Lompoc Valley there, and they're planning to drill another well somewhere near the proximity of this area, and they're concerned, there's a concern that there should be some contamination from this, from the septic tanks that are going to be placed on this project. I asked that, I'm asking Ms. Carmichael that this staff report should be coordinated with the utilities director from the city, and I indicated to him that you would be sending him a project before our next meeting on this so that he could see where and what the septic tanks might do to the San Inez River flow for them, you know, how it might affect them with this new well that they're going to drill, what the proximity is of this project. Secondly, I was wondering, how are they going to produce 10,000 cases on two and a half acres? I mean, 100 acres usually produces 30,000 cases, so 10 acres usually produces 3,000 cases, and this is less than, are they going to be trucking in fruit to produce these cases? Is that it? And if so, we need, we need a little bit more about the traffic report concerning this production process.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Valencia, yes, they will be bringing in grapes, as far as I'm aware. We have added a project-specific condition to this project, and it's listed, I just need to find it in here. It's listed as condition number 31.
What page?
On page B14, in the conditions of approval. And the condition just states, you know, "To ensure adherence with Section 35.42.280 requirements for case production, we are requiring the applicants to submit a annual report by January 31 of each year, which will include the vineyard acreage on site, the grapes grown on site, and the number of cases produced at the facility, and the percentage of grapes that are grown off-site." So that way, we can ensure that they are meeting those land use development code requirements.
Sometime back, we were dealing with a vineyard in San Inez, and they were very concerned about the traffic that this looks like at 50 or more percent of the vine, of the fruit would be coming out from the outside. Is that to produce the 10,000 cases? Is that the case?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Valencia, I think I would like to go ahead and address your question to the applicants, to, I know that they are bringing some in. I, I'm not exactly sure of the total truck trips, and so I'd like to direct that question to them.
I know that you can modify, and I appreciate that. I know that you can modify the production by the, the frequency planting of the acreage and so on. So, yeah, I'd like to have that answered.
Okay. Any other commissioners' questions? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I had a question about fire protection. It's on the end, negative deck on page 19. It says, "The emergency response time standard is five minutes." And this is going to be under the jurisdiction of the county fire. I don't think it's within five minutes. Has that been, and I have a note here, there, there was a note someplace, you know, where that was addressed, because I want to make sure that's accurate. Perhaps you could help me?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, this is actually information that I received from the county fire department. They reviewed the project and commented on the ND and had me actually add this information in. So I did get that straight, directly from them.
Okay. I would, I live in that area, and I would sincerely doubt that. I think it's probably five minutes within, from the city fire, but, but if, if the fire department says it, I guess we go with it.
Ms. Black?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, it's my understanding that the first responder isn't always the county of Santa Barbara. It might be the closest fire station, which might be in the city.
Oh, right.
I have a question about the homeless shelter. And it's, I guess the question is, and maybe the, I'm not quite sure that the concern is, I guess, the adjacency of a winery to a homeless shelter. How, I noticed when I drove over there, there's no cars, and I don't suspect that any of the folks living in that shelter have cars. How do they get, do they take, is there public transportation? Do they wa, how, how do they get back and forth to where they, where they're going during the day?
Madam Chair, there, there is actually a bus service that does-
Oh, it takes-
Yeah, that does come and pick them up.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, whether they take it or not, I imagine is, you know, up to them, but it is available.
Okay, so they're not, it's not as though they're walking down to the, to 246 and then, okay, fine, that answers that question. Okay, any other?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Valencia?
Yes, yes, they do use the bus, but there are some that choose to walk, and some of them that choose to walk with their children, and they walk across the bridge over, down from Sweeney Road, take a left over to the city and walk over the bridge, and it's very unsafe, but they do do it, and you see them continually doing it.
That's usually in the morning, I would guess, probably.
It's in the morning and at night when they come, and that, you'd see them at about 4:00 coming to the center. Many of them that don't miss the bus or don't have transportation or whatever, walking with their children many times across the bridge over and on to Sweeney Road.
Okay, thank you. If there are no more commissioner questions, I'll turn it over to the applicant. Ms. Beltranina?
Good morning, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Tish Beltranina with M&amp;S Engineers, and we've been working on this project for quite a while. I will address all of your different questions, because I do have specific information on that. First of all, I'd like to talk about the young dynamo of a woman that I'm here to represent today and her partners. Kathy Joseph has been making wine in our county for some 20 years. She's the head fiddle of, of fiddlehead sellers, and if you've ever met her, she's a crazy little dynamo of a wine-making lady, and she does have an estate vineyard of Pinot Noir in the Santa Rosa Hills AVA on Santa Rosa Road, has chosen not to do a winery or tasting room out there. She also processes from the eastern end of the valley some fabulous Sauvignon Blanc that comes from vineyards in that area. And, you know, basically, for me, this is like a homeowner's, a dream of homeownership for a business. After 20 years and, and, you know, renting in the wine ghetto of, of Lompoc, where many a fabulous wine is, is certainly born, and, and many a startup vintner, you know, is born, you know, she's always had a dream of having her own little winery. And it is little, you know, she does about 5,000 cases now, and I've, I've squeezed in between the barrels in the little place she rents now, and she's got a tiny little tasting room. And anyways, it's a, you know, it's, it's an operation that has been instrumental in weaving the tapestry that is our beautiful wine industry and our reputation in Santa Barbara County. As far as, let's see, I'll start with the, the five-minute response time is generally an urban standard, and we faced this on a couple of projects where the fire department brought it up and then said, "No, it's an, it's an urban standard." But the same, the city of Lompoc is under contract to serve this area, so they are the first responders to this area. So in fact, the fire response is good, and in fact, at the subdivision review committee, the fire department actually made the comment that this project was one of the best laid-out site plans they had ever reviewed. So we're very proud of that fact. And we have had some input, phone calls to Dana, from the people who run the shelter. The people do come in, they're supposed to come in at 6:00 and leave with everything at 9:00, and actually, I believe the verbal comments were rather positive from them. Dana can speak to that. We, in terms of the water wells issue, our septic system for the domestic wastewater is way out on the front of the site, that disposal area, and then we have the bioreactor ponds that will take the winery wastewater. For 10,000 cases, it's a small amount of wastewater, but we will probably far exceed the 100-foot setbacks that you need from any water well for septic disposal, which is the 100-foot minimum. And, but we would be happy to, you know, work with anyone who's going to be drilling a water nearby, but with our 200 feet, you know, from the, from the river and certainly our septic system is hundreds of feet away from the river area on the property line, so I don't think those will have a big impact. Regarding the vineyard on the site, and this brings me to the fact that I chaired the Wine Industry Task Force that created the tiered winery permitting over a few years, so I know all of the thought that went behind the tiers. And the third tier, the rule is that you have one-half acre for every 10,000, for every 1,000 cases of wine that you will be processing and producing. And the reason for the tiering was that as more grapes had to be brought in, we ramped up the tier, and that would come to the planning commission. The location of this winery is perfect because the grapes coming from the east side of the valley, the grapes coming from her vineyard on Santa Rosa Road, basically will come out to the highway and, you know, go about 400 yards in here, and, and it's, it really, you couldn't ask for better access and turning lanes and things. The vineyard installation, you know, of course, we have our vineyard management person here, but basically, we agreed that upfront before the hearing, we wanted to try and get half of it, two and a half acres in, but then because of some of the underground piping and construction activities, the second two and a half acres that will go in needs to be delayed because we need to do underground work and construction and then put it in. So therefore, that is kind of the reasoning behind all of this. Certainly, yes, Commissioner Valencia, we will be bringing in, you know, Sauvignon Blanc from the eastern end of the valley, Pinot Noir from the, from her estate vineyard, and then, of course, the, the vineyard on the site will be processed there. So that addresses that. And I think that we have all of our team here in terms of the partners. We have our engineer here to speak to anything that you have questions about. I, I hope I've covered pretty much all of, all of your questions. The one thing I do want- all of, all of your questions. The one thing I do want to talk about a little bit is the, the few modifications that we're asking for. When we talked in the Wine Industry Task Force about events, we said, well, you know, twenty-acre parcels or more really can accommodate all these setbacks and things that we wanted easily. And we think that these should be allowed to have events. And anything under that should have case-by-case review. We worked with Noel Lang on the language when we turned all of our desires from the task force into language. And, and so that, you know, that is the thought process that went into that. Our modifications really, our impacts as far as events, really, more than anything, the road yard and out towards the Sweeney Road, which are two major sources of noise on the property, will be the ones that would be impacted most by the, any reduction in setbacks or allowability of events. These are very small, hundred-person, low-key, in-the-afternoon events. We took out the nighttime music and things and, and, you know, kind of brought in the numbers, brought in the conditions to make them compatible with the neighborhood. And there's another, there's a photo, I think, that Dana might have that'll show. They've done a little bit of proactive work, too, along the property line between them and the closest house, which is the neighbor towards the back. Let's see, is one of these? They have planted, a year ago, they started by planting a hedge along the back property line. Do you have that, those photographs or, okay. And they also put up a very nice wooden fence all along the road yard to screen that off. So these are things that they have just gotten, gotten growing. Or, so the bushes along the property line between them and the neighbor to the back will provide a really good screening for that neighbor. And they're already well, well on their way to meeting because of their spacing. The other thing is that the storage barn that will be relocated to, to turn around will also give some shielding from the other buildings. And the open, open side of it'll be toward the wineries. So again, some of the movement on the site will also deflect things. The, the events will be over towards the road, near the, the old barn in the lawn area and in the winery areas. So well away from the neighbors. And the parking, seventy-four spaces. There, we did DG and part of it, we did a lot of innovative things for stormwater management and things. So we did DG in the bigger parking area and then the asphalt where the handicap spaces are and the close-to-the-door spaces for, you know, that most of your daily tasters will use. And then, you know, everything else for the events is accommodated completely on the site. And the parking is all, you know, centered over there near the county road and roadside of the property. So again, trying to move everything, you know, out towards the county roadside and the road to keep it away from all of our neighbors. And with that, if you have any questions, I may refer them to other name, members of our team. And I'd be happy to address in the future anything that the public has to say. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Okay. There they are. Let's see. Here you can see, you know, the, the red barn here in the house in the back and in the forefront of that, the building that'll be moved. I think the next photo, and you can see the, oh, that's too dark, yeah. You can see the fence along the county road there. And maybe one of the sec, maybe one of the others. There's again the fence that comes out to the road along the county road. And then the next one should show our nice little green. There you can see the bushes along the backside. Let's see. Let's see. Right there. You can see them all growing up. So the winery buildings will be over here and the events, the events will be over here. This is the house. And this is the barn that'll be turned in this direction with its back there. And then, of course, all of this will be vineyard. And the vineyard that's being planted now will be all of this area down here. And then where we need to do some work, it'll go in later. So with that, any, any questions?
I have two lights on. Commissioner Blau.
Just really a question for staff. I wanted to ask it before Ms. Beltranina finished. You said earlier that the standard was two hundred participants on a twenty-acre for an event? And what this is, is ten acres and a hundred people. So proportionally, it's the same. If I got that right? Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the setbacks, this is the private house here? You need a setback from there? Is that what you're asking for?
That private house, what we need is a setback of four hundred feet for the winery from the house. That's the standard. And then you can modify that. And we're asking for the exception of, how many feet less is that one?
It's from the eighty-something? It's a hundred feet from, it's, you're asking for a three-hundred-foot setback rather than a four-hundred-foot setback from the nearest off-site, single-family residence, which is that one?
Which is that house there?
Yes, it's that house there.
So you need a waiver of a hundred feet or something?
Right. And for that reason, we're trying to, you know, shield them with the bushes, too, and everything. And of course, turning the buildings, you know, and they'll have vineyard between them. But, and then the other setback reduction has to do with the county road yard.
Yeah, that's.
You know, and I don't think they'll be bothered on weekends, you know?
Do these people have any problem? Have you had any conversation with them? Do they have any problem with the setback? You haven't had any problem or any, have you discussed it with them? Because there was a letter from one lady that couldn't be here. Is that?
No.
Is, are those the Sangers there?
No.
Where, where is the Sanger residence? Do you know? Is it further up on the road on Sweeney?
Yeah, you know, you know how there's that big loft? Yeah. And then the mayas up above. It's, it's up there, yes. And her concerns were with the road over by her entrance and some, you know, parking that people park there sometimes. But, you know, as I said, we, we have all our parking for the events and everything onsite, seventy-four spaces. And certainly, we do not want to impact Noel's property. And I think.
Okay. And what do you estimate, you know, to go from, the estimate that I gave you was that a hundred acres makes thirty thousand cases, comes down to three thousand cases per ten acres. So you obviously would be trucking in a lot of fruit. How, and I know that you mentioned it's a small distance. How many trucks would you be trucking in to create the ten thousand cases? Is it one or two or is it thirty or what is it?
Oh, you know, they're.
You don't know, is somebody there?
It depends on the size of the trucks because they use, for these smaller wineries, they cut smaller blocks and they bring in a truck with a few, you know, sometimes they use horse trailers, but they bring in a, you know, a few boxes at a time. I, for five thousand cases, I.
Perhaps.
It's really hard, hard to estimate.
Okay, perhaps during public comment, you can consult with your consultants and we can get an answer after we.
Sure.
If that's acceptable.
Okay, that would be fine. That would be adequate.
We'll look to see for an estimate.
All right, fine. All right, thank you. I'd like to just open up the public hearing portion. And our first public speaker is Bob Manning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just like to encourage you to support this project. It brings a lot of economic impact to the area, obviously. And I think the wine industry as a whole is the bright light in our economic picture in Santa Barbara County right now. So this is a, a key project for Lompoc and for Santa Barbara County, too. Brings three revenue streams, one from wine grapes, one from wine, and one from tourism. So it's all positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, please.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Danny Anderson, president of the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to echo Mr. Manning's comments and also to say that Ms. Joseph, who is the winemaker at Fiddlehead, as was pointed out, has been a leader in, in growing this industry, if you will, and particularly in the Lompoc Valley. And is, is very sensitive to the community and does a lot for the community. So we urge your support for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jason Reynolds?
Morning, Council. I also work, I live in Lompoc with Danny Anderson and I work with him quite a lot with, within the chamber, also in a business in Lompoc. And over the last year or so, we've, we've developed kind of our own little task force within Lompoc to, to reach out and, and, and help this industry. We see a lot of industry leaving our, our town right now and noticing that, that this is the one that is, is knocking on our doors. We're really working with, with the city and with the county and with everyone to really try to put our arms around this. We've, we've worked very diligently with the wineries in Lompoc city limits. And knowing how, how their business helps each other, we, we really are in, in support of this project, knowing that it's, it's right outside our city limits. And if we're gonna, we're gonna put our arms around the folks that are in our city, we know how important it is to, to, to notice the folks that are right outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dwayne Hohm doll?
Yes, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. I've known the property for a long time. It was a Madsen place at one time. And Madsen's daughter married Bill Dermody. So it was called the Dermody Ranch. The one thing that's going to happen there with making wine, it goes back to what Mr. Madsen did when he had his still in the basement. And he used to sell it along, he used to cut holes in the posts along Sweeney Road and put the bottle in there. And then the people come and buy the bottle, put the money in, then he'd go back and refill it. So I mean, it's, it's just carrying on tradition.
Legally.
Legally now. But, you know, I, my dad and I leased the place from Hiroshima. So we, we've known the place for a long time, what they're doing, the saving of the house and what they're going to do, that two-story house is a beautiful house. And that's going to be great. Having the wine industry here, which ties into, which is the only growing industry in the state, in Cal, in Santa Barbara County, especially in the city of Lompoc, this goes real well with it. The one thing that Joe was talking about, bringing in grapes. Every winery in the city of Lompoc has a tow of the grapes in. So I mean, it isn't anything, they're not going to do anything different than anybody else is. And the transportation coming in there, and they come in small trucks, they come in big trucks. So what, what's coming there i- is a plus. The city likes to have it, the people around the area, and it does blend with the area. So I think it's an excellent project. I'm really happy to see it coming through. And it's going to be a benefit to the Lompoc Valley.
Thank you. And any other public speakers? If not, I'll close the public comment portion and return it to the commission. And perhaps, I see Ms. Beltranina has left. I thought maybe we have an answer, oh, to get an answer to Commissioner Valencia's question. We don't have that yet. All right. Then I return it to the commission for any further questions before we go to deliberations.
Madam Chair, I was asking that, you know, I don't know if the county is continuing, is continuing for two weeks. I want to, I want the city of Lompoc to have a chance to look at, make sure that there isn't any impact to them. And I want to make sure that they understand that then, I'm not opposed to the project. I just want all the hard-answered questions answered before we approve the project, you know. And the city has some concern. I want to make sure that they answer the questions before we, moving for continuance.
I'll second it.
Ms. Black, did you have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, we are proposing to continue this for, essentially for a month to May twelfth. If the commission has anything else that you would like us to address in the meantime, that would be very helpful to hear. So before you move on the continuance, if there are other issues you'd like us to look into.
I just have a question for Ms. Carmichael. When you sent out the information to any public agencies, was the city of Lompoc included? I mean, did they get, were they aware that this project was?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes, it was sent to the city of Lompoc.
Okay, great.
And I did receive a phone call from their planning department, just asking questions about the project and when it was going to be coming to, at the hearing. So.
Okay, great. Okay, Commissioner Brooks? Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I did have a question. And I think when Ms. Beltranina was talking about the creation of the tiered process, because this idea of, in order to have a special event, a winery needs to have twenty acres. And then I had asked staff, and perhaps Ms. Carmichael could elaborate, you know, do we have other wineries in the county, you know, where an exception has been made? Because you said that that was part of the process, that the county would look case-by-case, not wine cases, but case-by-case, to see if, you know, that could be adjusted. So perhaps, Ms. Carmichael, you could provide that information that you found?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, there is one winery that was approved in 1998. It is located in the Lompoc area. It's called the Melville Winery. It's eighteen acres approximately. And they do have an approved twelve events per year with a hundred and fifty attendees on that site. That, the site, though, was approved prior to the tiered, the tiered setup that we have now in the land use development code. But it does exist and does have those special events. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
I have the same concern Commissioner Brooks was expressing and was going to ask staff to research. Ms. Carmichael has already done so. It's a precedent issue for me. I, I think we have approved other tier-three wineries that have had the proper size. And there's a basis for that in the ordinance. So what we're doing is basically opening the door to come in with smaller versions of special events on smaller parcels. And before we do that, I think we need to take a big-picture look and see what other small tier-one, tier-two wineries there might be that would be looking for the same kind of consideration to move to tier-three but are on smaller parcels. It involves traffic. It involves noise. It certainly involves consideration of whole communities. There may be reasons for making an exception here that wouldn't apply to other areas of the county, but I hate to do that lightly. So I'm basically just marking that territory.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks, do you have another question? Yes. I just want to go back, you know, to the same issue. And if we are going to continue this, we'll probably, you know, discuss this more. But I'd like to put it out there, perhaps, you know, for everyone to think about. The Lompoc Valley, you know, does need this winery. I am very excited. I have met Ms. Joseph. I know she is extremely supportive of our community. You know, any benefit you go to, there's Fiddlehead wines on the table. She's, you know, a very, very active person in our community. I also know that the city of Lompoc, you know, really is embracing the wine industry. We, we do need it for economic growth. We'll take stability right now. I mean, after Bodger left, it's kind of very sad reading that in the paper, you know, this past week, you know, the flower industry is slowly being replaced by the wine industry. And this weekend, I'll just put a plug in for our Vintners Festival. That will be across the street at River Park. So there is, you know, a lot of activity there. And I look forward to going and having a taste of wine. You know, I love the ghetto and I love these other places, but all of a sudden now, we have the possibility of a winery in an outdoor location, you know, where people could taste and, and go and sit on, on the bench. And the tasting would be done, you know, on a daily, you know, it's open for tasting every day, I do believe. Okay. That being said, okay, this idea of possibly, you know, setting a precedent with the twenty acres, it's been, you know, it's, it's been done before. But I think especially, you know, being the third district commissioner, I have to look at that because of, you know, so many parcels in the third district that, you know, might ask for the same consideration. And when I had my tour on Sunday, it was kind of interesting because the gentleman called me. He lives up on Sweeney Road. And I spent forty-five minutes with him going all around Sweeney Road. And then he said, okay, now I'll take you to the winery site. And we start heading up the hill. And I'm saying, but wait, we're down the hill. And he said, no, the winery's up the hill. Well, further up the road on Sweeney Road, there's a notice of, for in development, there's another winery that's out there. So now, all of a sudden, I said, but no, no, this isn't the winery I'm going to be looking at on Wednesday. We're down the hill. So we started talking about what, what is the future of Sweeney Road area? And this gentleman. And this gentleman who has owned property out there for, you know, over 30 years, he said, "Well, it, he could foresee many wineries coming into the Sweeney Road area." Great for the area, but now this is making me think, you know, we have to begin to look at this in cumulative impact and kind of looking at it holistically. And I have no problem with the tasting, but if we are going to, you know, tweak the special events numbers, I, I, I need to think very, very carefully about that as far as whether it's going to set a precedent. I, I want the winery, you know, I do support the project, I definitely, you know, as far as, you know, just kind of a quiet tasting room, but if we're gonna have the special events, you know, I think we need to look a little bit more carefully at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau.
Yeah. This is a question for Ms. Carmichael, you may, may wanna answer it when we meet next time. But if I heard Ms. Beltrana correctly, do I understand that if it's a Tier Three winery and they have 20 acres, they're allowed to have 12 events with 200 people and they don't need our permission, am I correct? That's just part of the code? So, and what I heard, what I heard Ms. Beltrana tell, is that correct?
Ms. Black. Not quite.
Oh.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Blau, it's, it's an allowed use if your Commission approves the discretionary permit. It's still discretionary to the Commission, but the code essentially sets it up to allow the Commission to do that without any special findings.
Okay, so the research, I, I just sort of need to know the intent when that code was written. Seems to make sense to me if, if the code also says that if you don't meet that criteria, we can have the discretion to move it downward, with her thinking that, you know, if it was less than 20 acres, it might be less than 200, it might be less than 12. I just wanna know if that was the intent when the code was written, because I think it'll help Commissioner Cooney and also help me too. We, we wanna be careful about setting precedent, but if that was the intent when they wrote it for us to maybe reduce the number of events or reduce the size of the event, that would make sense to me. So, I think that would be helpful when we meet next week. I don't think you can answer that question today.
Okay, with no further questions in, we have a motion and a second. And then all those, the question is to continue this to the meeting of May 12th. And to call the question, all those in favor of continuing to May 12th, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the motion is carried, so we see the project back on May 12th then. Thank you. We're gonna take our lunch break, we'll be back at 1:15 for item number four, which is Russell Ranch, and then we'll hear item number five, which is the McDonough appeal of Baumann Single Family Dwelling and Landscaping sometime after that. I don't have any projection for that, but sometime after 1 o'clock. So, we'll see you all after then. Thank you. 14th, and we're on agenda item number four. Ms. Rodriguez, would you please read that into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Mr. Harold Fletcher, agent for Mr. Jeff Green of Amethyst Properties, Inc., landowners to consider case number 08, TPM 14, TPM 14,756, application filed on September 24th, 2008, and to adopt the mitigated negative declaration 09 NGD 23 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Exparte and site visit disclosure, please? None, okay. And we're gonna turn to Ms. Weber for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Members of the Commission, good afternoon. The proposed project is a request for a lot split in Coeyama Valley. It is located off of Highway 166, about a half mile east of New Coeyama. The project site is 1,528 acres in size, is located in the rural area of Coeyama Valley, and is zoned commercial agriculture with 100 acre minimum lot size. The proposal is to subdivide the 1,528 acre parcel into two lots, one of 1,428 acres and one of 100 acres. Currently existing on the parcel are four residences and other agricultural outbuildings. All structures on site were built prior to Santa Barbara County zoning regulations and are considered legal nonconforming as to use. The proposal to further subdivide the subject contracted land raises two main policy issues. One, the ability to retain highly productive agricultural lands on both proposed parcels, and two, the potential for adverse biological impacts due to the subject parcel being in range of endangered species. The current agricultural uses on site contain approximately 1,200 acres of cultivation and approximately 300 acres of grazing land. The grazing land encompasses most of the proposed 100 acre parcel. In the absence of the existing cultivated area on the proposed 100 acre parcel, its sustainability as an independent agricultural enterprise pursuant to policy 2D is in question. However, through analysis, staff was able to make the required findings for the proposed land division based on the parcel's history of agricultural use, the presence of prime soils on both proposed lots, and the presence of good water on both proposed lots. The parcel is situated within range of the Sandal Queen Kit Box, the Giant Kangaroo Rat, and the California Jewel Flower. They have been included on the federal and California Endangered and Threatened Species List. The negative declaration identifies adequate and feasible mitigation measures to reduce the potential impacts to less than significant levels. Taking into consideration that one, neither the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service nor the California Department of Fish and Game has designated the subject parcel as a critical habitat for these species. Second, both proposed parcels are fully developed with residence. And thirdly, 80% of the parcel is in current agricultural production and has sustained this practice for several years. A negative declaration was circulated for the 30-day review period with mitigation measures applied in areas of aesthetics and visual resources, biological resources, and cultural resources. No written public comments were received. With the inclusion of the departmental letters, standard conditions, and project-specific conditions, the project is found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed map is in conformance with the provisions of the LEDC for land zoned ag 2100, and the project is also in conformance with the subdivision map act. It is therefore staff's recommendation that the Commission's motion should include the following components. Adopt the required findings, including SEQA findings, with the revisions that I just placed on your desk, this little memo. Accept the negative declarations and corresponding mitigation monitoring program, and approve the project subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my staff presentation and Ms. Black and I are available to answer any questions that we have.
Great. Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions of Ms. Weber? No? Okay, then we'll turn it over to the applicant for any presentation that he may have.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chairperson Brown and Planning Commissioners. My name is Harold Fletcher, I'm with Fletcher Cross and Associates. This parcel, well, is part of a larger parcel. The Russells, in the past, have had about 40,000 acres in, in Coeyama Valley. As the children, you know, they split off this and that. And what we have here is the old family ranch headquarters and, and the present Richard Russell, who works for Grimway Farms, which is Amethyst, one of the larger carrot growers in the world. They also grow organic onions and other organic. They just wanted to keep this for the family. It's in the sales agreement, should it ever be sold, it would go to Grimway Farms so that there would never be a chance of outsiders owning, owning the property. Nothing has changed, no buildings are being built, no roads are changed, no wells are The only thing that's happening is we're drawing a line around 100 acres and for the family to have the piece. And it did meet the ag preserve requirements on the piece. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you might, might have.
Okay. Does, does the Commission have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you, Chair Brown. It's just for my own edification now, when this is split, then they have to go redo their Williamson Act contract, is that correct? It's just upgrade, updating it?
If, any change, you change the boundaries, you have to redo the contract. Both parcels qualify for the Williamson Act.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I see no other questions from the Commission, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing portion. Do we have any speaker slips? No speaker slips? Therefore, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the Commission for any further questions. And if no questions, for deliberations. I believe Commissioner Blau, this is in your district.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair Brown, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to move staff's recommendations amended by their April 12th modifications.
A second? Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. And any further discussion? Commissioner Cooney? Commissioner Valencia? I'm sorry, Commissioner Valencia, excuse me, seconded. Thank you. Okay, with that, then I will go ahead and, all those in favor of the motion and the changes of the additions, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And there you are. That's gotta be a record time for a project for this Commission.
Typical Fifth District. Just typical Fifth District, what can I tell you?
All right. Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our last item of the day, which is item number five. And if Ms. Rodriguez would please read that one into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Gerta and R.A. McDonough to consider the following. A 09 APL 26, appeal filed on October 17th, 2009. B 09 APL 40, appealed filed December 17th, 2009, and to determine the project is exempt pursuant to section 15303 of the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. And we begin with Exparte and site visit disclosure. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I visited the site on Sunday.
Okay, any others? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, this is a Third District item. I actually made two site visits and so I could look at the two properties.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Madam Chair, I visited the sites, both the applicant's and appellant's sites last Friday. At the time I visited the appellant's site, Ms. McDonough was present, as was her counsel, Mr. Mannion, and Mr. Price was also present.
Great, thank you. And I visited the site on Friday and went on to the Baumann property, although I didn't go on to the site itself. Okay, with that, Ms. Weber, present, your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Commissioners, the case before you is an appeal of a proposed single-family dwelling in the San Inez Valley. It's located approximately one mile east of Highway 154 on Roblar Avenue. The proposed project would result in the construction of a new residence on a knoll in full view of the appellate's residence, which is located across the canyon approximately at the same elevation, 500 feet northeast of the proposed development site. Existing on the property is a single-family dwelling, which will be required to be converted to a guest house and a tennis court. The arrows indicate the vantage point of where the pictures were taken. Here is the area for the proposed house. The oak tree is a good marker point to get your bearings. You see it on the aerial and then you can see it on this pictorial. More vantage points. The appellate's house. The proposed area for the applicant's house. The appellants have raised the following objections. First, stating that the Central Board of Architectural Review's approval relies on inadequate landscaping for ridgeline residents, fails to minimize grading, ignores alternative sites that avoid ridgeline development, and does not achieve harmony with the adjacent development. The appellate's second objection states that the Director's approval of the project is inconsistent with hillside and watershed protection policies and the visual policies of the land use element because it is incapable of being subordinate to the surrounding natural environment and it intrudes into the skyline. First, I would like to address the issues of skyline intrusion. As shown here, the proposed residence is not sited on the highest elevation of the parcel and is not expected to do, to intrude into the skyline. Second, I would like to address the appellant's assertion that the project does not harmonize with the environment. Through SEBAR review process and the applicant's willingness to incorporate their recommendations, the site and elevation plans do demonstrate that the proposed house can blend into the surrounding environment by lowering the finished floor and moving the house back into the upsloped hillside, thus supporting a harmonious relationship with the natural terrain. It diminishes the prominence of the proposed residence atop a knoll and aids in buffering the appellant's view of the house. This area is indicative for hills and canyons which have residence atop knolls. The applicant's request to develop a custom 2,600 square foot home would not be atypical for this area. And the proposed grading calculations are not excessive for this type of development. Thirdly, I would like to respond to the three alternative suitable site locations proposed by the appellants. Two of the suggested sites are still on ridgelines and would still be subject to the county's hillside ridgeline jurisdiction. Therefore, the issues that have been brought forth with this appeal would still be issues with either of the proposed alternative sites. The third suggested site is within a canyon near the existing tennis court. Staff requested a site analysis be completed for this area. In summation, the analysis shows the potential need for extensive grading when compared to the current proposal and that the site looks upon the neighboring Bridlewood Winery fruit spoil area. Just a side note, at the August 14th, 2009 meeting, SEBAR unanimously agreed that the tennis court alternative site would not be suitable for a home site. I would also like to address the proposed project landscaping. Here's a schematic diagram depicting many shrubs and trees, which SEBAR and staff consider an adequate amount of screening for the residence. As shown here, the applicant will be required to plant large-size specimen trees for screening. It also specifies in the project, it is also specified in the project description and conditions of the land use permit, that adequate screening must be provided and that it must adhere to the SEBAR set of approved plans. The appellants also voiced their concern for privacy between houses. In consideration of their concerns, SEBAR requested that the applicant submit a line of site study from the appellate's house to the proposed project site. SEBAR reviewed those studies and recommended changes to the house's orientation and surrounding landscape, which the applicants have incorporated. The appellants have also raised the following objections to the Director's decision to approve the land use permit, stating that the project is inconsistent with hillside and and watershed protection policies and the visual policies of the land use element, because it is incapable of being compatible and subordinate to the surrounding natural environment, and it intrudes into the skyline. The land use element is not aimed at preventing ridgeline development. These policies are in place to ensure that the visual and environmental effects from ridgeline development are addressed, analyzed, and to the maximum extent minimized by staff. Staff has addressed the proposed project's effects on such issues and has demonstrated consistency with county policy, as referenced in the staff report and the land use permit. While neighborhood compatibility is required, there are no current county policies protecting private view sheds or neighbors' privacy. The proposed location cannot be seen from any apparent public view shed. Neighbors would be able to visually see the proposed residence. However, there are already several, already several similar type residences in this area that can be viewed by others. Zoning in this neighborhood is inter-rural agricultural, and most property owners purchase small agricultural parcels with the expectation for more space. The 500-foot distance between the sites, when both on larger parcels, could be conceived as not enough distance between the sites. However, there is nothing in our LUDC zoning ordinance that prohibits approval. Earthwork calculations are not excessive. However, in order to achieve the balancing of competing policy goals contained in the land use element with respect to skyline intrusion and minimization of grading, approximately 30 square feet of the proposed 576 square foot garage would encroach into an area of 20% to 30% slopes. Limited level areas atop ridgelines and within canyons introduce site design challenges on subject parcels. However, the main portion of the proposed residence would be located on a relatively level no, knoll comprised of less than 20% slopes. The project adheres to SEQA exemption 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures, and is consistent with all county adopted land use policies and codes. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeals, grant de novo approval of the project, make the required findings specified in Attachment A of the staff report, and include the memo revisions in the memo. Accept the SEQA exemption specified in Attachment B, and I did make minor changes to that, those exemptions also, and approve the project subject to recommended conditions of approval specified in the land use permit as Attachment C. We are here to answer any questions you may have. This concludes my presentation.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Weber by commissioners? None. Okay, I have a question. And if this is a question that I should be asking of the applicant, then please let me know. But the question has to do with this roof deck, which I guess sits on top of the roof, and really sort of the landscaping isn't, doesn't really going to, won't hide any views from that roof deck over to McDonough's property. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. Oh, Madam Chair, that is correct. And we did have, the roof deck was actually first facing the McDonough's property, and then they moved it to the other side. So I actually can't confirm what they would be seeing at that, but it did move to the other side. They did try to.
Okay. All right, fine. Okay. And no other questions? All right. Then what I would like to do, since this is an appeal hearing, I will allow the, the appellant will give their presentation, and I'll give the same amount of time or less to the applicant. We'll open it for public comment, and then we'll come back for rebuttal by the appellant and the applicant. And during the rebuttal, I would like no new information presented, just comment or clarifying questions from either public comment or through any commissioner's questions. So the appellant presentation. Come forward and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name's Mark Mannion, I'm an attorney with Price Postell &amp; Parma, and we represent the McDonoughs. We have a PowerPoint presentation that we emailed this morning, so hopefully we can get that loaded up.
Okay, thank you.
Before I go through my policy analysis, I'd like to invite Mr. McDonough to come up and introduce himself and talk about the process from his perspective and a little bit about what their position is. I think that'd be helpful for the commission to hear. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chairwoman and planning commissioners. Thanks so much for having us here today. I'm R.A. McDonough. I just wanted to give you a little bit of our sort of color around this process and the issues that, as we see them, and then Mark will sort of give you a little bit more sense of some of the issues as he sees them from a more technical perspective. You know, first of all, thank you very much for spending the time on this today. You know, I realize that, you know, we're using public resources when in fact we tried to work this out privately, and hopefully we can still do that. You know, some history here, I think, is important to realize. You know, we came to this without really knowing anything about the development guidelines here, you know, in the county. I've obviously learned a lot. You know, as we came to it, we found out from other neighbors that the Baumanns had already gone through a process like this in the 90s with the U-Banks, who are neighbors across the way, developing a house similarly on a ridgeline. The outcome of that was for the U-Banks, as we understand from the U-Banks, to move their house as far back as possible from the Baumann's current residence, which is 835 feet away. And that house is actually below the Baumann's current residence. In contrast, what they're asking for today is to build a house that's only 480 feet, so almost half the distance to our current house, and that would be slightly above our house, if you can picture the view line there. So, you know, as we went through this process, you know, we really had looked at the BAR to help us, you know, give us guidance in terms of how you address these issues. In the first meeting, there was a lot of confusion between the planner and the BAR as to whether or not they had any purview at all to think about alternative sites. In the second meeting, we specifically asked, you know, could we look at alternative sites? At the end of the day, they only evaluated one, which was this tennis court site. There were two or three others that we had proposed looking at, but we were told we were not allowed to look at those. And then you'll see in the third meeting, basically the BAR said, you know, we don't feel comfortable at that tennis court site, but we're not going to really look at any other sites, we're just going to review this one site. So a lot of our issues, which are around neighborhood compatibility and making sure that this house is harmonious with the house that we have, and with respect to distance specifically, you know, and location, it really could be solved by moving the house back, having a more robust landscaping plan, or moving it to one of these, you know, other alternative sites, which would, which would work as well. So, you know, I think there are options here that we're willing to explore. So far, the Baumanns haven't been willing to explore them in terms of a view that they want to have over the top of our house, which is sort of precisely our issue, that, you know, their, their views are more important than, than our privacy in terms of being able to look into our house, almost as you would look down into a fishbowl is sort of the way that we view it. So wanted to thank you very much for the time here, and obviously happy to address any questions when that, that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Baumann, as we've submitted in writing, we believe the Baumann residence is inconsistent with county ridgeline hillside development standard. In particular, I've cited two here and put them down on the page, which I think should be helpful. The first is the minimization of grading, and the second is, is that development on ridgelines shall be discouraged if suitable alternative locations are available on the lot. Next slide, please. The property is currently developed with a, with a primary residence and a tennis court. So there's already development on the site. This isn't a site with no development on it, and you've all are aware of that and know that. We believe locating the residence and the pool in the approved, approved location will require substantial grading and site preparation. Portions of the driveway, as detailed in the staff report, and the detached garage are located on slopes of 30%. During the SEBAR process, only one alternative site was looked at, and that's the site in front of the tennis court, and that's the only site that was given any real consideration. And the conclusions were, because you'd have to do some excavation and recompaction, that that was infeasible, which I'm not so sure that that's a proper conclusion. But nonetheless, that's what they did. And I think this also goes to the issue of this resistance on behalf of the Board of Architectural Review to really delve down in these types of what I consider more land use, not architectural type of, of policy considerations. And frankly, I think this is more something that's in the purview of the planning commission and more appropriate for you to really think about and consider. And that all leads us to our belief that there are suitable alternative locations on the site. Next slide, please. And here, we've identified three of them. The first one in the back here is, is the tennis court that they already looked at and concluded that because it would require some excavation and recompaction, that that's not a sensible site. The second site is up here in the front where their, their principal residence is. I mean, it's already developed, there's a house there, and I'm just not aware of any reason why you can't remodel that house. I'm sure it's smaller than they want, but that doesn't necessarily make one to come to the conclusion that it's, it's, it's not suitable, and that's, that's the determination. Not that it's the best site with the best views, but is it suitable? And then the other option that we've talked about is here, sliding the house down a little bit off of the knoll onto a flat area there, and kind of stepping it back into the hillside instead of plopping it, plopping it, maybe not the right characterization, but putting it on top of, of the, of the ridgeline. So we think these are certainly three alternative sites that we've identified, and I don't know that it's necessarily our job to identify where they should put their house, but we've clearly identified that we believe would be consistent with the, the county's policies that ridgeline development should be discouraged. Next slide, please. In addition, the Baumann residence is inconsistent with the required county findings related to development. The first being that the development be harmonious, have a harmonious relationship with existing and proposed development, and the second being that the site layout, orientation, and location of the structures and signs be appropriate and well-designed in relationship to one another. Essentially, these are what the staff report refers to as kind of neighborhood compatibility issues. And the staff report acknowledges neighborhood compatibility is an issue. No, they're correct. There's nothing in the county code that says you cannot do this. And then we're not asserting that there is something in the county code that says you cannot do this. What we're asserting is that there's plenty of discretion in the existing county policies and regulations to afford the planning commission the right to appropriately condition this property to avoid some of these concerns raised by the McDonoughs with respect to the, to the layout. Next slide. With respect to this particular neighborhood, the neighborhood consists of 10 to 20 acre agriculturally zoned parcels. Home sites in the area are well-spaced from each other with an average distance of approximately 1,050 feet. And again, the staff report acknowledges that an expectation of a person when they buy a 20 acre parcel or a 10 acre parcel is you're not going to have development in close proximity to each other. I live in a residential neighborhood, so I have no expectation of having 500 feet between me and my neighbor, but clearly if I live on a 10 acre or 20 acre parcel, I think people's expectations are different. And indeed, I think that's why the, the regulations in this area are drafted in a such a way, they're not specific. It doesn't talk about a simple 50-foot setback or a 5-foot setback from the property line. It is murky, and it is done intentionally when the supervisors adopted these ordinances, and it's done to afford the planners and the planning commission the discretion to deal with these types of issues specifically. The, the other point is, in fact, that the Baumann residence is only 480 feet from the McDonough residence. Next slide, please. This is hard to see. Is there, I don't know if there's some way that we can improve this, the quality of this, but this is a diagram that shows the, the, here is the McDonough residence right here, and the Baumann residence is right here, and the distance is 481 feet. Everything else in this neighborhood is a much larger distance away. And if y'all came out to the site, you'd notice that, the, the location, the proximity of the different houses. And then the other thing is the, the amount of landscaping and the robust landscaping that's done to really, to really protect against the, the privacy issue. So really, there's two problems here. One is the, the close proximity, and the other is the, the deficiencies in the, in the landscaping plan. Next slide. The, and on the landscaping, the primary screening consists of five olive trees with a planted height of 17 feet, placed at elevations between 951 feet and 957 feet. The elevation of the finished floor for the residence is only, is 967 feet. So if you're out on site, you saw it slopes off on, on the side where the planning's going to occur, and, and it's really going to be largely ineffective. And particularly, this is so because of the type of trees they've decided to use, which are olive trees. Next slide, please. Here's an example of a, of a mature olive tree. And this is the problem with an olive tree. It's, it's kind of thin and wispy, and it's not a robust, like an oak tree or something like that, that really effectively screens a property. This is really going to have, not, not be, not be very effective at, at screening and the privacy concerns. Next slide, please. Here's the landscaping plan. Again, the olive trees are down in here, and the elevations are depicted, and here's the, the main residence. Next slide. Here's a, boy, that quality's pretty poor. The, here's an example, this was submitted in the applicant's application, of what they believe the landscaping will do. And you see that the canopy of the olive trees, and you know, here's the oak tree that's existing, here's the house, here, here are the, the characterizations of the canopies. And our problem is that just doesn't comport to reality. There is no way an olive tree is going to have that type of canopy screening effect. I mean, if that were the case, we probably wouldn't even be here. But there's just no possible way, particularly at the low elevation where they're planting the trees, that that's just not going to occur. Next slide, please. And kind of wrapping up here, the approved location of the Baumann residence is inconsistent with county ridgeline and hillside development regulations, and is inconsistent with the findings for neighborhood compatibility. We believe there are suitable alternative locations that exist on the parcel and must be given due consideration. Alternatively, the, the home site should be moved back further up behind the existing mature oak tree, and that we would recommend and request that rather than using the olive trees that we think are going to be inadequate, that we would use or require a coastal live oak, which is a evergreen oak tree that's going to be more robust and, and really effective at, at the screening, that they acknowledge is necessary by their own slide. And the next slide shows kind of what we're talking about, moving the house back behind that large oak tree that's, it's a deciduous oak, but still moving it back behind that, and then the planting of the coastal live oak up higher on the, on, at a little higher elevation, we think that would be the, the most effective. One other comment I wanted to make was, was about the SEBAR process. And it did, it was six meetings total, so it was clear that they took this serious. And I think it, it's, it's, it's an admission that, in fact, this is a complicated process. It's not an easy issue. This isn't one of the low-hanging fruit that they look at, and this is, you know, simple, and this is just another neighbor complaining because they want something, they don't want anybody developing near them. So I think the fact that it took six meetings isn't, you know, an admission that it was complicated, we just think they got it wrong. And that's what the appeal process is about, and so hopefully you guys can, can remedy that. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions by commissioners? None? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who's, I do, I do have. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Perhaps somebody, Mr. Mannion, perhaps you could address one. When we have this distance of 481, how do you measure that? Is that just point to point?
How was that?
Done by the survey.
Done by the, yeah, it was done by the survey, and it's residence to residence.
As the crow flies.
Exactly. No, we didn't, we didn't go up and down in topography, and we didn't take into, so it's, it's as the crow flies. And all of them were done in the area.
That way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant, Mr. Jones?
I have copies of my slide.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, you want to pass those out, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I am Evans Jones, architect for the Baumanns. Susan Petrovich is here and will cover some items that I probably will miss, and Mr. and Mrs. Baumann are here also, and if I've missed some things, they'll, they'll come up and speak. The Baumanns have owned The Baumanns have owned this property for approximately almost 30 years, and they have planned on this site as being the site for their main residence for many, many years. There has been, if those of you went to the sites, oh, there was a red bench up on the the hill, and that bench has been up there for, ever since I have known them and/or have known the McDonnas. And so the McDonnas knew that this was a site that they were planning to put their house many years ago. Thank Ms. Weber for a great staff report and a good presentation. I think it's accurate and and well-done. There's only one condition that at the end of my presentation, I would like to revise, and one of the conditions of approval. That tells who we are. I'd like to talk first just about architecture, size, and color. Next slide. This, as has already been explained, is the the site. The existing residence is there. We're proposing the new residence to be here. Pool, garage cut into the hill. There's the oak tree. The McDonnas are across over this way. These lines are sightlines taken from their house back this way, and the tennis court is off the screen back up in there. Next slide. This shows the floor plan of the house. It's a small house, 2,600 square feet, two bedrooms, a library, and a great room, a large veranda all around, three sides, and all four sides have roofs that come down to the ground. Next slide. Roof plan, and you, Commissioner Brown, you ask about the roof deck. The roof deck was over here originally, which is on the McDonna's side of the building. With their request, we did move it to the other side. It wasn't there for the purpose of looking down on them. It's the purpose of getting up in the evenings and watching the sunset and the night stars. And so it's really a better spot anyway, because the sun sets over there. But it's only 130 square feet. McDonnas will never see this roof deck, nor they will they see anybody on the roof deck from their from their home. Next slide. These are elevations. It's a low ranch-style house, deep overhangs to provide shade in the summer and to shade the glass, so we won't have glaring glass windows to any of the neighbors, and at night to protect the the night sky from any interior light getting out. Next slide. This is a, the garage, the garage is at a different scale. The other was eighth scale. This is quarter scale. So obviously, it looks large here. This is a small garage. And as you can see from the cut lines here, it's dug almost half into the hill, and McDonnas will never see the the garage. And it is true, because of moving this house back, this back corner right in there intrudes into the 20 or 30 percent slope, but that's the only spot on our site that we do that. Next slide. This is the Roeblar Winery, not shown for scale or size, only to show materials. The Baumanns would like to use similar materials, natural redwood on the outside, a shake tile roof, a little stone veneer, trellis that will be similar to this, maybe with this wisteria would be great. But I show this only for color and material, that I feel this house will blend into the surroundings better than most houses on the, any of the hillsides around. It won't be light colors. Next slide. We feel that we have met all the requirements of the ordinances and the policies of the of the county. First, the hillside ridge line ordinance, next. You can see a a line dotted in across the top. That is a line that is 19 foot above the existing grade, which is the height that you can build a house on a ridge line hillside ordinance. And you can see in all elevations, we are below that. Really, the only corners are the the roof deck, the stair to it, stair tower right there, and the same thing a little bit over there. All the rest of the areas are down below 16 feet. So it's a low slung house, and will fit into the hillside. Next slide. Secondly, the structures will not intrude into the skyline from public viewing places. The appellant said it would, that our house will go into the skyline, and yes, from their perspective, it will, but that's a private viewing place. Next slide. It's hard to see, but right there is the house. This is taken from Roeblar, west of Pepper Tree Lane, and we have a white pickup, and that's kind of what the light spot is there, parked up on the site. And I took this picture with natural without increasing or decreasing the distance. And you can see that the the height of the pickup is sitting on top of the knoll right now, which we're going to be reducing that by five or six feet, that we will not intrude into the skyline from a public viewing place. Next. This is a view, again, on Roeblar, east of Pepper Tree, and the same thing is true, and if you look closely, I can't see it, but where did my spot go?
Here, give me another one.
There it is. Again, it does not project into the skyline at that point, but if this house were moved westerly, like the appellant have requested, then I feel it would project into the skyline from a public area. There's one other area that you may be able to see this house from, and that's on 154, about a mile and a half away. I can stand on the site, and I can see a car on 154, but on 154, I was not able to look back and see the site. It's just, it's so far away. But I'm I'm going to say that I think there are three locations that you may be able to see this house from public viewing places. Next slide. Minimize grading. They've said that we have not minimized grading, so next slide, I think Ms. Weber showed this. Next. These are four residents in the area that have gotten grading permits, and you can see the combination of cut and fill on each of them is greater than the cut and fill that we propose, 1,000 cubic yards of cut approximately, and approximately 800 cubic yards of fill for this particular site. Our original site, which was closer out on the knoll, had maybe half this much grading. But in interest of doing what the McDonnas have asked us to do, in pushing the house back and lowering it, we have increased the amount of grading. So I must say, we are not on the site at the least amount of grading possible, but I think we're the least that meets the requirements of the McDonnas. Next slide. Compatible surrounding development. Next slide. This is, again, a similar slide that the appellant had showing, we've circled the houses that are on ridge top, and I think almost every house in the area is on a ridge top. And I might use this one. I actually used this slide and tried to calculate distances. I don't feel the distance between the houses, there's nothing that says we can't have a house within 400 feet. But if you look over here, there are two houses that are as close, if not closer. There's a house up here that is about the the same. I'm not sure that this is a house and a barn, but there are other conditions. I think this is probably, Simon's right here, and that's their house, and that's their barn. That doesn't count. But I think you'll find other houses in the Woodstock Oak Trails area that are similar to this. Next. This is, again, just showing some hillside houses above the McDonnas. Next. This is from Roeblar, and you'll see several hillside houses here that actually do project into the skyline. Here, I prepared these notes and have something on every slide, and I haven't looked at a slide yet. This, again, in compatibility, this is a list of addresses in the area showing square footages of those residences and attached garages. And you'll see that the Baumann's proposed residence, 2,600 square feet, is less than most in the area. So I think it is, it's compatible being smaller than. It may not be compatible, there might be neighbors that say, you know, you're not building as big a houses as we would like to see, so. But I think in the case of the McDonnas, this is a plus. So I feel we are compatible. Next slide. Again, I repeat, county policies do not protect private views or privacy. Next slide. These are items that we did to satisfy the requests of the McDonnas. I'd like to read a quote from the, this was the Cbar meeting of 9/11, where Mrs. McDonna said, let me see if I can find here, "House can be positioned on the site," this says, "this house can be positioned on the site that would solve our issues, and you know we've been very specific, both to John and Mary," those are the Baumanns, "and you, B.A.R., know in our letters that for us, moving the house back and using that, using what's the existing oak tree that is there as screening would solve so many of our issues." Mr. McDonna, in that same meeting, we'd rather just clear up our objections and let you guys move forward. This line of site analysis, where it clearly shows if the house is centered on the oak tree, which is only, which is only, I don't know, 15 to 20 feet or so back, where it, from where it is now, you know, all of that goes away. So again, they did ask that the house be moved back, and next slide. We did. You can see what is read, the the house here and the pool there is where we originally positioned the house, which, by the way, had the nicest views for the Baumanns, that they, at that point, could see the Figueroas. In the process of moving back, first 10 feet, then 20 feet, 25, we ended up 30 feet back, which you see in blue there, which more than half of the house from the McDonnas is hidden by that oak tree. So I think we have done principally what they have asked. In doing this, we created more grading, and you can see the garage over here, we've really had to dig into the hill. It does become steeper there. We lowered the house five feet from what we, originally, we had it three foot down. We came back, then after their request, and lowered it another two feet, so it now is five feet down. Move the roof deck, I already mentioned that. Next slide. The addition of screening trees. I have some quotes on policies. I'm not going to read those. You are familiar with your policies. This slide shows, we took, this is an actual survey and a a section done by Burke Lake Licensed Surveyor of the contour from the McDonna's house here, down through the contour, and then up to the Baumann house there. This is the existing oak tree. This is a knoll that is somewhat between the two of them, and we're proposing to put live oaks there with the purpose that when this tree is defoliated, the view from their house to the Baumanns will be obliterated again by these oaks at this point. The next section down is taken south of the main oak tree, that knoll that's down between the two houses there again, we're proposing a tree there. And you can see, I think that takes a 25-foot-high tree to stop the sightline of seeing at the eve of the Baumann house. I have never contended that we're going to hide this house completely. I have said from privacy views that we will protect the views from the McDonnas patio, any place on their area other than up on the roof, but any place that they can stand on their patio, that they will not be able to see into the windows or anybody out on the deck of the Baumann's house. So I'm saying we need to protect from the finished floor of the house up to the eve line of the veranda. Above that, I'm not saying that they may not see a peak of the roof. So in this case, this takes a 17-foot-high tree at that location to block the view. And similarly, this is down at the pool. It takes a tree there or a bush at this point that's eight foot high to be able to not see each other. By the way, I should point out that there's not a spot on the Baumann site that you can look over and see the McDonnas pool. I've tried every spot on there, and I have to go up on the hill where the cistern is to see their pool area. So they're well-protected right now. Next slide. This was a delineation that the appellant used. They colored in just the initial amount of the trees when they were first planted. And at that time, we were proposing a 17-foot-high tree, which I still would like to propose, and that's my request for change, and I'll come back to that. But you can see the house in the background. This is the oak tree, and these are the olive trees. There are five of them across there that we proposed at that time. Their initial planting size is the lighter color, and then the darker is what they would grow to eventually. Next slide. This is the landscape plan that was presented to the B.A.R. and approved. This, I wouldn't go to ask that we revise. So, next slide. This is a picture of the McDonna's house in January of 2008, when we started on the project. If you see, the landscaping that existed at that time was very minimal. Next slide. This was taken this month, and you can see how that landscaping has changed. Right in here, it's pretty hard to even see windows of the house. So my contention is, if that landscaping continues to grow, they won't see the the Baumann's hill if they don't want to. That'll be up to them. Next slide.
Hold on, just a Commissioner Cooney has a question.
Just while you have that slide, because it's tough to go back and find them sometimes. But can you tell us where on the Baumann property that photo was taken from?
Yes, if you look at the tree right here.
Uh huh.
That it's, it's got foliage on it right now. Let's go back one slide. Here is that same tree. It doesn't have any foliage on it. But in both cases, they were taken at approximately the veranda area, the southeast veranda area, the closest spot on the veranda that you would be to the McDonna's house. And both photos were taken from the same spot.
But from the proposed site, not down the hill?
Oh, no, no. It's a proposed site at the elevation, which I believe will be the elevation of the finished deck of the veranda.
That's a little bit below the view I had last Friday, so we'll have to reconcile that, because I was definitely higher than that by that bench that you referred to.
I went down from that bench six feet down the hill, because that bench is six foot higher than the final finished floor is going to be, so.
Where is it in relation to the windows and the eaves?
Where is what?
The bench.
The bench is six foot high? It's a, it's about the top of the window, or would be very close to the eve, because I'm saying it's six foot higher. The the ground that the bench is sitting on is six foot higher than the finished floor.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to establish the viewpoint, because this appears actually to be below the grade of the of the McDonna house, and from that bench, I was quite a bit above them, looking down into their yard.
That's true. Our our finished floor is eight and a half feet above the McDonna's finished floor.
Okay.
And that's when the finished floor, after it's graded, where you were standing, you are six foot higher than that, or some 14 and a half feet above. So in our proposal, we're lowering this whole thing down, so we won't be looking down into their yard the way you do today if you're up at the bench. If you walk to the edge of the hill where the finished floor elevation is, and that's what we had staked out there, you'll see a more true picture.
But this photo doesn't really capture that either. It's below that level.
No, I feel that I'm standing on that southeast corner of the veranda at the same elevation that veranda will be.
And that's at floor level?
That's at floor level, within an inch.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Let me just ask, from the McDonnas, you can see a stake. I don't know where it might be in relationship to this, but just by your description, it sounds like it might be pretty close to that pole or stake, whatever's out.
I think the stake that you saw, how do we get back to a site plan? Go forward to number 29, if you will.
Okay.
Okay, there is a stake on top of the hill right now that's located about in there, and it was at the location where we originally proposed the house. So if you were looking up the hill, and you saw on your right the red bench, and you saw a vertical stake, that stake was at the top of the hill at a higher elevation than what the finished floor is going to be.
Okay, but where is that stake in relationship to that picture that you took?
The stake, I'd say, is about in here.
Right.
I took the picture over here.
Okay.
So I was down the hill towards the McDonnas. So I was down the hill towards the McDonoughs and closer to the oak tree.
Okay.
That's where I took the picture and I tried to take both pictures from exactly the same place.
Okay.
Okay, let's go back to, any other questions on those two slides? These are, the appellate had pictures of oak trees, I've taken pictures of oak trees, these actually are, this is a field grown, not oak tree, this is a field grown olive tree that is in Los Olivos that we planted about five years ago. Next. This is another one planted maybe six years ago, field grown olive. Next. Another olive that was planted about five years ago. So they can be very dense, in fact, if you want to see a dense olive tree on Santa Barbara Avenue, just north of the horse clinic there, there are some old olive trees and I'll have to admit, they're probably a hundred years old, but they are probably forty feet tall and you cannot see a thing through them, they are very dense. So olive trees can be let get very dense. Next slide. We staked out the site mainly for you to see where the house is going to be on the site. We also staked out the five olive trees that were going to go along here. At the last B A R meeting, I, when they raised the height that I had proposed from seventeen foot to twenty-two foot, I made a comment that I think you now have taken away all of the views from the Baumanns' towards the Figueroa Mountains. We've given up at least half of the view by moving the house back this way. You can see from here, looking back to the Figueroas, that tree is going to block, and the hill is going to block half of their view towards the Figueroas. By putting up twenty-two foot high olive trees here, I said, I think you're going to obliterate all of their view. I took a twenty-two foot high too before, put at the stake that was surveyed exactly where those trees were going to be, stood on the deck, had somebody else stand on the deck right here, and I was right, you will not see anything of the Figueroas. And conversely, and I checked the same time, an eighteen foot high tree, you could see a little bit of the top of the mountains, but you could not see the McDonoughs' and conversely, they would not be able to see you. So what I'm recommending is that we take three of these olive trees that were down here, put them in an area here, so now we still have the same five olive trees, not specify a height of them. I'd like to, maybe we should pass out that, I'd like to change condition number two A of the staff report.
Yeah, can you can just continue with your presentation, please?
I'm sorry?
Would you just continue with your presentation, please?
Okay.
And then we can get to this.
All right, well, what I would like to do, which I think protects the McDonoughs even more than what we have here and also will allow the Baumanns to be able to see the mountains, because I think it's very unfair to cut that view off for them, I would like that paragraph, rather than to say the trees will be twenty-two foot high, located at such an elevation, that we say, "Trees and shrubs shall be planted of a size and at an elevation to adequately screen the McDonoughs' view of the Baumanns' residence from the finished floor to the eve of the veranda roof and screen the pool area to a height of eight feet above the pool deck." I think that gives the McDonoughs the assurance that they're not going to see the windows of the Baumanns' house, they're not going to see people out at the deck, privacy is going to be assured, but it also will allow, at that height that protects them, the Baumanns' will be able to see some of the Figueroa Mountains. I know they've lost half of it by moving the house back, but let them see some. I think with that, I have concluded my, no, I haven't, I need to talk about alternate sites, I'm sorry. Next slide. Next slide. In nineteen seventy-six, there was a proposal by a prior owner of where they would put their main house. Next slide. This was presented to the B A R by the appellant's and I have drawn, I've got the actual one that he submitted, I've drawn over it because it's so light you really can't see, but I have that for you if you want to see it. In this slide, it shows a proposed tennis court, it shows a proposed future residence and it proposed, it shows a guest house that they were building at that time. This was, is in the record, it's what they submitted for approval of the guest house. I took that and proportioned that, and next slide, by using these lines, I put the same lines on here and that is where that proposed house would be. I don't present this to, for embarrassing anybody, I present it only to show that a prior owner, prior to the Baumanns being there, had picked this site, which I really think is the only site for their house. Next slide. Next. Here are the two, the only two sites that I saw at, from the B A R meetings that they had, they, the appellant's, had suggested. One was here below the tennis court, there is a utility easement going right through that. This site is, there's a little level spot here where there's a corral on it, was produced without a grading permit, is non-compacted fill, we had a soils engineer, it's in the staff report, check that, it would all have to come out and be recompacted, plus I estimated it would take another, probably three thousand cubic yards of fill to put the house where they've shown it here. You can see the contours are going down rapidly in there, so it's going to take a lot more fill in that. Their other site right here is west of our site, that site, again, I think is going to take probably, I came up with thirty-one hundred cubic yards of cut and fill, because you're going to have to cut these upper contours here and fill these here. It was said that this is, that moved down the hill to the west to a level site, there is no level site there. This continues right on down at fifteen, twenty percent beyond their property, so there's no level site. Major cut and fill to put the house there, plus it's my belief that that will project into the skyline from Roblar. And the other site that he mentioned was down here at the existing guest house, which I just can't believe, somebody requiring me to tear down my house and put another house in, plus to make it of a size that even this small twenty-five, twenty-six hundred square foot house, you're going to remove several mature trees, some of them being oak. So I don't think that's a proper site.
Thank you, are you, have you concluded?
I have some other quotes, but you have probably seen them in the B A R. I thank you for your time and I will sit down unless you have some questions.
Any, any questions for the applicant? No? All right, then I'm going to open up the public comment period and I have one speaker If you, if anybody would like to speak, I need to have a speaker slip.
Susan Petrovich?
So Susan, I've got her, I've got Susan's.
You've got Susan?
So, Ms. Petrovich.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, sorry, the Baumanns didn't realize they were supposed to put in their slip. My name is Susan Petrovich, on behalf of John and Mary Baumann, the applicants. Your package includes a letter from the McDonoughs' and Mr. McDonough testified today making statements about the Baumanns' concerns about a U-Banks project, which was many, many years ago. In that case, I represented the U-Banks family and, for their project, and it was nothing like what Mr. McDonough described. In that case, the U-Banks submitted a discretionary project, they wanted to modify a building envelope that had been designated on the parcel map that created their lot. They wanted to move it up onto the top of the ridge that was directly in the view shed from the front of the Baumanns' cabin. So the Baumanns' living room and their entertainment area, which is the front veranda of that little cabin, would be looking straight at the U-Banks' house. There was no movement of the house mandated, landscaping was the discussion and this was an entirely new building envelope. And the distance between those sites was comparable to what we're talking about today, it was between five and six hundred feet, but it was comparable to this situation, but very different as far as the issues. It was not a ministerial project as this one was, but the Board of Supervisors approved the U-Banks' house, it's there. And the basis for the approval was the landscape screening. They didn't expect it to completely hide the house, but they wanted it to soften the house. The landscaping's now mature, if you were out there, you probably saw it, so this is a very, it's a very different situation, but landscaping as is being proposed here did the trick. Evans Jones and the staff did such a thorough job that I just want to emphasize a few points. I want to emphasize that ridgeline homes really are the standard in this canyon, in fact, in the entire area. The precedent already has been set and firmly set. The lots in this area are all approximately the same size, they were laid out mostly in the nineteen sixties, specifically with ridgeline view sites in mind, it's obvious. The appellant's own home, of course, is on a ridgeline. The Baumanns really aren't asking for anything more than what all of their neighbors already have, many of whom have built within the last few years, and many of the neighboring homes do intrude into the skyline, the Baumann home will not, many have very little landscaping themselves. I did want to touch briefly on this landscape plan revision. Twenty-two foot high trees exceed the height needed to provide adequate screening for the McDonoughs. So basically, twenty-two feet harms the Baumanns', but doesn't provide added benefit at all to the McDonoughs. Seventeen feet does do that. And the, one thing that Evans didn't point out is the revised landscape plan also clusters those olive trees so that they better shield the view from the McDonough property. I do want to say that the only parcel in this canyon, other than those on the flatlands near Roblar, wasn't built on the ridgeline site, but that was because of the escha, not because the owner didn't want to build there, but the county, the conditions on the map that created that lot prevented it because of escha. Regarding the C-BAR, Mr. Mannion wasn't at the C-BAR hearings, but there were six hearings because of McDonoughs', each time would raise new objections. And each time, both the C-BAR and the Baumanns tried to respond to those, they continued the hearing. I would like to read one thing that one of the C-BAR members said. Chris Miller Fisher on August fourteenth, "I think it's a modest proposal for a site next door, I mean, it's less of a house and you're lucky to have a house this size proposed for this site." Less of a house, meaning less of a house than what the McDonoughs themselves had. The C-BAR looked at suggested alternative sites, none was suitable. Not only was there far more grading, but in the case of that tennis court site that they keep emphasizing, there were, there were problems with it that Evans mentioned, but also it's placed directly in front of several other houses and it looks right down on the warehouse and spoils area for the winery, so it's not really fair.
Ms. Petrovich, I'd like you to wrap up, please.
I'll wrap up, sure.
We're going on to five minutes.
The grading for this project, as Mr. Jones said, is less than for others comparable. If I could just quickly touch on the proximity issue, because there really is a rule of law issue here. We don't have any ordinances or policies that address proximity or this private view and, and privacy issue in Santinés. If, as Mr. Mannion claims, the grading isn't consistent with the hillside parcels or policies, then the house should be moved back to where it was originally proposed, to be completely in compliance. And then, I'd like to close by reading what Puck Erickson said at the C-BAR, she's another member. Getting back to these overarching comments, I have to respectfully disagree, respectfully disagree about the expectation in this area and its privacy. I've had many friends up there in this area for over thirty years and I think historically there are many houses a few hundred feet away, top to top, where you hear the guy talking, so to say this is a pristine area in terms of privacy is pushing it. Thank you, we would request that you approve the project with the revised landscape plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baumann, please.
Thank you, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is John Baumann, my wife and I are the applicants. In April nineteen eighty-two, when Mary was pregnant with our second child, we stood up on the hill of a beautiful piece of property that Renton Mitchell at Santinés Valley Real Estate was showing us. There was a little guest house style cabin on the property and the hill above that, where we were standing, was where Renton said the main house would go. We fell in love with the land, we bought it, we still love it today, our kids grew up on the land, we have always dreamed of spending what's now the last part of our lives in the house we would build on that hill. We put a little bench up there around nineteen eighty-four and we've been sitting up there ever since during every visit, imagining the house we'd build in our later years when we could afford it. We've seen a lot of people come and go on our Pepper Tree Ranch driveway since then, in fact, we are now the longest homeowners there by far. The house next door to our east has had four different owners since we've been there, including the McDonoughs', who arrived about seven or eight years ago. All of them, including the McDonoughs, knew that we were planning to build on the hill where that bench still sits. I'm sixty-two, Mary's sixty. Last week, we celebrated our thirty-ninth anniversary. We've both worked very hard our whole lives, I'm Bowser from the group Sha Na Na, Mary is a psychologist at the Help Group in Los Angeles, where she's clinical director in charge of six hundred and fifty autistic kids. When we were finally able to start the project, which is now years ago, we consulted the McDonoughs', we brought them in from the very beginning. It's a modest project, it's less than twenty-six hundred square feet, as everyone has said, it's one story, it's natural wood. We have always wanted to make it have as little impact on the neighbors as possible and that remains true today. The McDonoughs at first were fine, Gerda even once said, "It's your property, do what you want to do." But that seems incredible now. They started demanding things, they said, "Move it back, move it down." So we moved the house and garage back thirty feet into the hillside and as Hasbun said, we lowered the pad several feet despite that causing more grading and more expense. That's what they wanted, but when we did it, it wasn't enough. Whenever we've done what they asked for, in every case, they have then wanted more. It made us wonder why we had ever made any of these concessions in the first place, since whatever we gave up just resulted in further demands. Back and down finally turned into somewhere else altogether. The B A R's rejection of three alternate sites that they suggested and the B A R's flat-out conclusion that there were no suitable alternative sites, this is the site, resulted in the suggestion of some more sites. And so on and on it goes. We have nothing more to give them, we suspect they have a lot more financial resources than we do, they're probably hoping that if they just drag it out long enough, maybe we'll get sick or we'll pass away or we'll run out of money or we'll just get so disgusted that we don't want to live there anymore. Well, you know, we may get sick.
We spent every spare moment staying in the cabin built there by the previous owners. The kids slept in the bedroom and, well, John and I slept in front of the fireplace on the sofa in the big room. Back in nineteen eighty-two, we had been shown the intended site location for the main house, not only by our realtors, but also by our neighbors, the Escaliers, who own the property the McDonoughs now have. By the way, the same original site location is depicted on the document from the nineteen seventies, which Mrs. McDonough had her planner present to the B A R hearing on June twelfth, two thousand and nine, calling it the intended main house site. Since we did not have money to build, we placed an Adirondack bench on the site where the main house would go in order to enjoy the sunset, to view the Figueroa Mountains, to gaze at the stars and to remind us of our dream. During the twenty-eight years we have owned our property, there have been four different owners of what is now the McDonough property, the Escaliers, the Fishers, the Scots, and most recently, Gerda N.R.A., who purchased their house and property in two thousand and two. I consider the past four owners, including the McDonoughs.
Excuse me, you were speaking to the Commission.
As friends.
Thank you.
And all of them were well aware of our plans to build on this site. When we finally were ready to build with the intention of moving up here full-time within the next five years, we were confident that there would be no objection from anyone. We had voiced our plans to Gerda N.R.A. over the past several years and had even gone to them to ask them how they liked their architect. For this reason, we did not even attend the first B A R hearing in November two thousand and eight. When Gerda N.R.A. voiced their objections, we listened and made dramatic concessions far beyond what was reasonable. We moved the house back, not five feet, not ten feet, not twenty feet, but thirty feet from its original location. house back, not five feet, not 10 feet, not 20 feet, but 30 feet from its original location, lowered it by several feet, sacrificed most of our view of the Figaroa Mountains, altered the house plans by moving the tiny viewing deck to the opposite side of the house, and provided generous, extensive, and costly landscaping plans. Now, it's time to move forward. I respectfully ask that the Planning Commission turn down the McDonough appeal and allow us to live out the rest of our lives in the house we intended to build, on the site where it belongs, on the land we purchased over 28 years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Baumann. Are there any other public speakers? We have no other public, no, there's slips, Commissioner Brooks? No. Okay. Then what I'd like to do is I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll give the appellant rebuttal time three minutes, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing that I think is important, McDonoughs don't begrudge the Baumanns their right to build their house. And, and all we're doing is we're looking at the, the land use codes, what the provisions provide, and trying to figure out a way to do this in the least impactful way. It's not about stopping them, and ultimately, I suspect it's a gorgeous views up there, and I suspect they'll have a house up there. The question is, do they get everything they want? This is about give and take. And, and the other thing, boy, it sure does appear to me that this is kind of the classic bait and switch. They present all these drawings with these big, large olive trees that maybe in 100 years, they'll be that big, maybe not. And now, they're proposing something even smaller. I think there's probably a really easy fix, particularly since their plan, and they intend to plant coastal live oak anyways, why not just swap out the two species? And I think I know the answer to that, and I think I know why they don't want to, because, in fact, it'll do what the graphic depicts, as truly blocking some of the privacy issues, but will also block their views of the Figaroa Mountains, or obstruct the views of their Figaroa Mountains. So, so it's, it's interesting. It's really not about, and, you know, and anybody who's been on the site, this is not about views from the McDonoughs. It's simply not. The knoll's there, and it's going to be there afterwards. The other thing, which I need to respond to, is the sense that there's a rule of law at play here. That's just nonsense. There is ample discretion in the ordinances to provide you the ability to condition this project. And conditioning this project isn't illegal, unlawful, or anything else. So, to suggest that there's somehow a rule of law at play here that, that limits your discretion in this regard is, is just inaccurate and wrong. So, in any event, we think we've, we've, particularly for those that were out on site, Commissioner Cooney, I know when you were out there, you went up to the other site, and I just have a hard time understanding, unless they, you know, you know, bury that hill 20 feet, the, the idea that you're not going to be able to see it. I mean, I could see you up there on that hillside clear as day. It wasn't, it wasn't, I had to look up over the trees. It was just, I could see your feet. And so, I think there's just a little bit of a departure from reality in some of the exhibits that have been provided. And again, what, what I think is the easy fix is, and what we're suggesting, is using the existing oak tree to provide appropriate screening, and then swapping out the olives for the coastal live oak that they already proposed to plant anyway. So, I think that would be a pretty even-handed exchange of compromises by both parties. So, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Again, the McDonoughs, I'm sure, are very appreciative of all your effort and your time, and we, here, any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Jones. Ms. Petrovich will have three minutes.
Thank you. I don't think I'll take that long, Madam Chair.
Good, thank you.
Two, two things. First, swapping out oaks, sure, let's put 35-foot-high tree there so they never have any view of anything. But, more important, there is a rule of law at play. This is a ministerial permit. So, the question is whether or not the project meets present county comp plan policies and ordinances. That's it. No privacy, no private views, no proximity. The landscape plan was carefully crafted to accommodate the neighbors' needs and requests. I think that's fair. And the site was lowered six feet in order to do the same. If we don't lower it, we'll have less grading. That's great. If we don't move it back in the hill, we'll have less grading. If that's what they want, great. But I don't think that's what would be best for either party. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for any further questions of staff. None? All right. This is a third district project, so Commissioner Brooks, I'll let you take charge here.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Brown. I did spend quite a bit of time on both properties. I was with the McDonoughs, you know, with the people that are representing them, and then I also went to the Baumanns with Mr. Jones. It was, it was, I'm glad I got to see both properties. When I walked out into the backyard of the McDonoughs, and I looked up at the oak tree, which was, you know, our, my sign, and it was like, oh, my goodness, you know, gee, that's really close. And, however, then when I went to the Baumanns the next week, when I went out into the backyard and looked over, it seemed to me that the McDonough property, the back, I couldn't see anything in the backyard from where I was standing. And I think I was standing, I think Mr. Evans had me stand at this point where maybe I was a little even above what the finished floor height would be. And I asked Mr. Evans, I said, "Have both parties been in both the backyards," you know, "to see this, actually?" And I don't know. It sounds as if, you know, maybe there's, during this compromise period that's, you know, been going on, you know, maybe that has happened. Another thing I noticed when I made my return trip, as I drove out, I was looking on ridge lines. I looked, I was coming, came out 246, went on 154, turning on Roblar, and I didn't see, there was one home in particular that really stood out. But then, when I got onto the Bowman property, and I guess this picture shows it, you know, you do see homes, you know, on the ridge lines on the other side of the McDonough house, where, when I went to McDonough property, I didn't see those at all. So, the, the idea that, you know, there are homes that I think are tastefully done, you know, and, and they're at the ridge line, they are all over, you know, this particular area. When I was on the Bowman property, Mr. Evans, mind you, we were there in the middle of a squall on Monday. I'm sure that's the most rain, you know, that we've had out there in a couple of weeks. But we were out there, and he lifted the, you know, the two-by-four that he had, and to show me the height of the trees that were being proposed. And I remember being at the McDonough's house and looking at the views, which are fabulous, you know, I mean, the views to the canyon, and then, you know, you have to turn, but then you can see over Figaroa Mountain. Up at the Bowman property, and seeing some other nice views, but all of a sudden, this thing went up, and not only, it definitely hides the McDonough home, but it, yes, it did definitely hide Figaroa. So, he kind of explained to me, you know, if these were, if the height was, let's say, it's 17, I guess was the original proposal, and I, I could not see your house. Mentioned to me that that is the original home, you know, for that area. Just very, very tastefully done, and the plan for the Baumann home, same thing. These are not huge, huge, overwhelming homes. If the landscaping, the olive trees, if they're too skimpy, if this could be just resolved with, can you cut the top of oaks? If you put it, no. Okay, thank you. My horticultural, it, so, anyway, that is, you know, what I have seen so far. And I'll strike out my other commissioners to see what they observed.
Okay. Who else? Commissioner Blau? Commissioner Valencia? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when an appeal comes to us, I really look at it very carefully, like other projects, but sometimes I even go over and look at the allegations very carefully, because it's usually somebody has spent a lot of money, and somebody has challenged that, and the people that are challenging it have also spent a lot of money, and it's just, usually, it's neighbors against each other, and later on, they're going to have to get together again. So, I look at, what is the true allegation that they put? And the true allegations that these folks put in, the McDonoughs, were the water, hillside and watershed policies, and the visual resources policies number two. And so, I went to the sixth area in our, in our staff report, and I look at it and divide the, look at what the county has to say, the comprehensive land, land use element, and then I see what the staff says in the discussion. And I try to understand their concern, and it just isn't in there. It doesn't make it. So, I thought, well, I missed it there. Let me go to the visual resources policy. And I go in there, and I look at that over and over and over. And based on what the C-Bar says, and the rest of the staff report, it still can't make it. I thought, well, maybe I'm missing something. So, I'm going to go back to the issues and approval and staff responses. And one thing that stands out is that, it says, "While approval, while neighborhood compatibility is required, there is no current policy protecting private views or neighbors' privacy." I mean, that's, there is, there aren't any county policies at all. And then it says, "There are already similar type residences in this area that can be provided, can be viewed by each other, and that was specified too." And that says, "The 500 distance, 500-foot distance between the sites, when, when both own larger parcels, could be conceived as not enough distance between the sites. However, however, there is nothing in the land use document, zoning ordinances prohibiting approval." So, the three issues that they might have had a point of making falls flat on being justifiable for them to get this approved. And looking at that over and over again, I thought, well, maybe I missed again. So, I go in again, and I looked at it again, and I'm sorry, I just can't find the issue. So, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I just can't grant the appeal. I'm going to have to deny the appeal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Blau?
It seems to me the only real issue here is the private views. And as Commissioner Valencia adequately pointed out, that's not grounds for us granting the appeal. I mean, my, my suggestion would be perhaps the appellant should plant more trees to screen their views. It's kind of like, if you're concerned about your neighbors looking into your private property, you need to plant some more shrubs around your house so that they can't see into your property. I'm going to cover property rights kind of a guy, and I'm, I don't like much of what this county does when we put so many restrictions and so many conditions on what you can do with your own private property. I'm real happy to find out that the applicant has made so many compromises that they've, that they have made by putting the house 30 feet back, by agreeing to plant more trees. I'm not sure, if I were in your position, I'd do that. You know, it's my property that you, it's your property that you bought some years ago, and I think you have the right to use it reasonably. And I'm not, and, and if you're complying with most of the rules, as Commissioner Valencia pointed out, and the policies, to have forced you to go beyond that to protect some of those private views is not appropriate. They don't own your property. You do. So, I'm, I'm going to follow Commissioner Valencia, and I'm not in favor of granting the appeal.
Well, I would just like to follow on from Commissioner Blau, because I, I sort of feel differently about privacy. I live in the urban area, and for us, granted, it's an urban area, and it is different than living in this area, but I think the principles are the same, that there is always the expectation about privacy when somebody builds, builds an addition, does a remodel. And in fact, you've heard me say, talk about the story of a neighbor two houses away who built a second story. This was before there was any, the noticing was very good in the county. So, now, I'm living with a, even though I was there first, and this neighbor built this second story with this big picture window overlooking not only my property, but others. And, you know, it is about a privacy issue. And you're right, the county doesn't really, particularly in this area, doesn't guarantee either the private views or privacy. But I think that there is an expectation about privacy, certainly in, in building, or at least there should be. I would be in favor of, only because I, I don't think olives are an appropriate species on the hillside, I think it'd be better to have oaks on that hillside to really protect the privacy. I realize it takes away the Baumanns' views, but we don't protect private views. It may be wonderful to have 270 degrees of views, but I do think that there should be taller trees, and I think they should be a different species. And I, I would prefer to see the coastal live oaks on that hillside to protect the privacy for the McDonoughs. So, I'm sort of in between. I could support denying the appeal if landscaping changed somewhat. So, I need to see where Commissioner Brooks is going to go. So, Commissioner Cooney, we turn it over to you for the last one.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. As you might imagine, this is a difficult project for me to look at through legally-trained eyes, because I, like the attorneys and my colleagues who are representing the parties, I struggle to find little wisps of law on which to hang emotional arguments. And they're, they're few and far between in this case. At first, I thought the environmental review was inadequate, and I looked into that, and lo and behold, whoever corrected the issues, I saw there. But that didn't really address the issues between the parties. It really comes down to, to how they feel about each other and, and live in that proximity. I will say, in, in defense of the McDonoughs' concern here, that distance, whatever it is, 480 feet or more, is, is very, very little when you're talking about the kind of properties that they have. The expectation of peace, quiet, tranquility is why people have, have labored all their lives to buy property in the San Inez Valley. And this, this particular canyon is, is entirely consistent with that basic expectation. And it will, I, I don't care if, if it was a solid cement house with no windows, it would still impact, another family living that, across that little divide, would impact the enjoyment the McDonoughs are going to have of their property. So, the question becomes, really, if the parties can't work it out, does the Planning Commission, and ultimately, the county, have anything in the law on which to base a decision that they should not be able to build their home there? And, and I really, I would be remiss if I said that I thought there was something in the hillside-ridgeline guidelines, which, which really are case-to-case, to prevent the building where it is. It really comes down to the Baumanns' consideration of the McDonoughs' privacy concerns. And, and there was a suggestion made. I read the condition of approval for 22-foot olive trees. I hear my fellow commissioner with a great deal of landscape experience saying oaks would be better. I've heard the parties talk about the, the two varieties. That's beyond my, my ability to judge. I would be in favor of, at this point, referring the matter back to the C-Bar one last time, telling them that we've reached a conclusion that the house is correctly sited, and we need their advice on trees that will block the view of the Baumann, of the McDonough residents from the Baumanns'. And if their existing landscape, if the existing condition does that, that's fine. If not, what does. So, that we basically hit that compromise point where the Baumanns can see the mountains, but not the Baumanns' backyard or front yard, whatever you see. That, that would be the most, I think, the Planning Commission could accomplish.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I just wonder if the, the applicants, I was asking for a modification in the conditions of approval, and I think this actually does just what Commissioner Cooney was referring to. He's, he's saying that trees and shems should be planted of a size and an elevation to adequately screen the McDonoughs' view of the Baumann resident from finish fort, Eva Veranda roof, and eight feet above the pool deck. I think that does it. And, and that allows, we need, we would need to give somebody the approval right for this condition, so- would need to give somebody the approval right for this condition, so maybe we would add that this, that whatever they want to use, that be approved by the BAR, and then we're kind of done with this issue. But I think it accomplishes what you just said. We had, that they would go back to BAR for the exact species and variety to be approved.
Okay. Ms. Weber, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would. BAR, we, you know, I was lucky enough to sit through all five, not the very first one, because I wasn't the planner on it at that time, all five BARS. And they were very specific on the types of olives. They went through that, and they made sure that the types planted were going to be the bushy kind that actually spread out. So, I mean, I'm not from, I'm not a landscaper, but of course, three landscapers, I think, sit on the BAR, and they were the ones there. And they, you know, they know their trees, and they were specified in the plan.
Well, as I read the conditions, the conditions, I appreciate that coming out of the BAR is different than how the project is conditioned in terms of the landscaping. Because the BAR may have done various, you will put these kind of trees that meet these kinds of parameters, whereas in the conditions in our, that Ms. Weber has done, doesn't necessarily reflect exactly what the BAR said.
Madam Chair, and we may need to have Ms. Weber clarify this, but it's my understanding that condition two is really based upon the C-bar's approved landscape plan. It does reference, as indicated in the C-bar approved landscape plan. So, and they did spend five hearings at this. So if the commission wants the C-bar to do something different, I think you need to be a bit more specific. If, I think sending it back with Commissioner Cooney's suggestion that they look at it and make sure it meets what they've already said it meets-
Okay.
-isn't going to be very helpful.
Madam Chair.
All right. No, I'm sorry, we've-
So if there's a different direction the commission would like the C-bar to implement, I think that would be probably more helpful.
Okay. So what you're saying is basically, Ms. Weber, if I may, that what Commissioner Cooney is suggesting is already, sort of meets, is already contained in the condition?
Madam Chair, that's correct. And the full-size set of plans, it is interesting, because they have it written down by the trees at that 17-foot height, and then up at the chart, they were listed at 25-foot height. And at that time, I did do an in-between statement. So the original approval did state at that 17-foot height. And I mean, the-
So.
On your, I'm sure you didn't bring your full-size set of plans.
Right.
But they have a chart that has the listing species of the trees and the size that they're supposed to be. And then on the actual site plan, they listed them again. And so there was a little bit of discrepancy between the heights at that time. And in my land use permit, I went for an in-between size. So I went a little bit higher than what was on the site plan, but not that was on the chart. And so that could be rehashed again at C-bar.
Okay, so what is on the chart is-
25 feet.
25, so here at 22, okay. All right, well, I'm going to let Commissioner Brooks, how would you like us to proceed?
I have one more question, if we could.
Oh, please.
Sorry.
Before you do that.
Does the applicant have the ability to revisit C-bar independently for a modification of a landscape plan or a slight change in the project? That'd be my only question. If he does, then I'm good with the way it is today. They can go back later if they want to do it.
Let's let Ms. Black answer that question, please. Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Blau, the C-bar will have to give final approval once the planning commission takes whatever action they do today before they'll be finished, right? So, and the C-bar's final would have to be consistent with whatever action the commission took. If the applicant were to want to revise the landscape plan in the future at this point, we would come back. We would make that another appealable BAR decision, because it would be different than what the commission ruled on today. Because you're basically sitting in the stead of the C-bar on the appeal, and so you're making a decision or reaffirming a decision that the C-bar made, or reversing a decision that the C-bar made. And so they'd need to be consistent with that, or it'd be another appealable decision.
Well, but it's going to have to appeal before it becomes an issue.
That's correct.
We'd look at that one small issue by itself, and who cares? I can go either way. I think this is resolved.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes. Are we saying, then, that what was handed to us today, the proposed change for paragraph 2A, that that is not specific enough? Because that was going to replace 2A, which talks about the five olive trees, and this language says, you know, trees and shrubs shall be planted adequately to screen McDonough's view of the Bowman's residence, et cetera. Is this not adequate, then?
Madam Chair, if I could just characterize the submission, it was a proposal for a change submitted by the applicant at the hearing. You could, it's within our discretion to adopt it or not, but at this point, it's simply been put forth by one of the parties and not concurred in by the other. So it's up to the commission.
Well, I would like to hear, then, from the commissioners, because-
Well, I think that the trouble for me is that I don't, landscape-wise, I don't have an understanding of what this does. I haven't looked at it in the kind of detail that the C-bar has. And I would presume that what they have, what the conditions are here, that what Ms. Weber has done and taken and slightly modified them, if I will, just based upon the plantings that are proposed, that that provides the privacy. Now, I don't know what this condition A, proposed change A, might do. I don't, I don't know. Maybe Ms. Weber can.
Ms. Black?
Yes. Madam Chair, I think if the planning commission wants to give the BAR the ability to review this again in a slightly different light, you could adopt this condition. But the BAR would, the C-bar would have to translate this into an actual landscape plan. And if it resulted in changes, I think it's another appealable decision. I don't believe that this is specific enough for people to really understand-
Right.
-what the planting plan would look like.
Right. Well, I agree with that. It's just too broad to be able to meet that. So that would be my position. I would prefer to see the conditions, that which is, already exists in the conditions of approval, we stay with that. But perhaps we need to hear from the rest of the commission. Commissioner Blau?
You know, if, the fact that this is going to be looked at again by C-bar before they can get final approval, I don't have any problem leaving it the way it is. I don't have any problem changing to this condition if you add to the end of this paragraph, as may be approved by C-bar. Now, C-bar may not make a change, in which case you have no appealable issue. If they do make a slight change, you have to appeal it, but I doubt that it's going to be appealed if we're talking about they want to use a slight variation in bushes or trees, which accomplishes the same thing, or perhaps it's even better. I don't know that, but-
Well, I think if you, if I may, I think if you do that, you allow them to change the heights from what's listed here, if I may take from your suggestion. And I don't, from what I hear of the commission, I don't hear that that's what, where the commission wants to go. But that's only me and how I hear it.
Like I said, I can go either way. I don't think it's that big of an issue, to tell you the truth. We're going to get the house screened, no matter what. I think the issue is, is that, is it, you know, 17 feet high enough to screen the entire house, or the eve of the house, or does it need to be 22? Are we going overboard? I'm not sure that we've looked at that.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree. There's, screening is a problem here, and we saw two pictures, one where there wasn't any screening, and then the one that's of recent, where the McDonoughs are already, McDonoughs are already screened fully by themselves. And then this additional screening, which the C-bar has looked at, not once, not twice, but six times, and now they're going to see it a seventh time. I'm sure that they've looked at this particular problem, which is viewing from more perspectives than we have today. And I don't, I think what they have here in attachment A is adequate. I mean, they get to the detail, five particular trees, three live oaks, and three in particular boxes, 22 feet in width, 22 feet high and 22 feet in width. They're into specifics of this thing, which we're not into specifics of the viewing. So I think they've really got a good handle on it, better than we have, I think.
All right.
So I agree with the conditions of approval.
Commissioner Brooks?
Okay, thank you. All right, well, then, I'll go along with the majority opinion here, because I, this, what was given to us today is very vague, and I will trust that the C-bar will continue this conversation, I guess, when they look at it. Well, they-
I think my understanding is that they need to adhere to these standards. These standards need to be, will be incorporated into the landscape plan. Is that correct, Ms. Black? That are listed?
Yeah, the conditions of approval.
Right.
Madam Chair, this is what you're holding, is the preliminary BAR approval.
Right.
And if they do anything different at final, then it would be appealed.
All right, thank you. Okay. With that being said-
Could I just insert one last thought? My feeling is that, and both Mr. Manion and Ms. Petrovich understand this, the parties are going to have to work this out. They're going to be neighbors, and this is only one issue. It's a big one now. It's gotten bigger. The reason for seeking some more time was to give them one last opportunity to do it. But on the other hand, I think they're going to have to do it regardless of which way we decide today. So by denying the appeal, nobody's really happy. The proposed landscaping here is going to block the view of Figueroa Mountains for the, at least in part, and someday, when these trees are big enough, on the part of the applicants. And unless the McDonoughs, the appellant's, take some action on their own property, they're going to have a major privacy intrusion. So hopefully, they can work it out, and we'll work it out, and then whatever they agree to will supersede the action of the county. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Okay, then, Madam Chair, ready to make the motion?
Okay.
Perhaps if Ms. Weber could put the slide for the staff recommendation, because I'm just going to move that the commission accept the staff recommendation.
With, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
With the change to the sequel findings modified in the memo dated today. Yes, thank you.
Yes, that's it.
That's correct.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and Ms. Rodriguez, would you call the question, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Thank you very much. Unless you have anything else for us, Ms. Black, that'll conclude for our hearing for the day. Okay, thank you.